Okay. You guys can hear me?
Yep.
All right. Okay, so it is five o'clock. Today is Monday, April 20th. This is a meeting of the Village of Oregon Village Board, so we will have a rule call, please.
Peterson? Here. Donovan?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Ollig?
Here.
Glish?
Here.
Horton?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here. All right, thank you. So on our agenda, we have lots of instructions of how to connect to a Zoom meeting. I'm going to go ahead and guess that if you're here, you've already figured all that out. So I'm not going to read how to download Zoom. I'm going to keep going to the second page. The Zoom log info is there to call in, the information is there. To watch the meeting, OCA Media is broadcasting this Zoom meeting, so thank you, OCA Media, for doing that. Let's see. Oh, also, should know that archived meetings are always available for viewing on OCA Media's YouTube channel. So folks, if they can't connect to the Zoom meeting, that it will be on their channel. If the public would like to participate during this meeting, you can do some written public comments. You can send written comments to the Village Board on the issue listed on the agenda or not listed in the agenda by emailing the Village Clerk. That address is P-H-A-A-G@VIL.Oregon.WI.us. And then for those of you, obviously, who don't have access to the internet, you can always give Peggy a call. She can send you minutes afterwards and help you catch up. So this is a reminder to Village Board members and Village staff. So I'm going to try to run this like I normally would a meeting. We'll see. I have everybody up on my grid, so I think I can see everybody. If you want to see everybody there on the little box where everybody's pictures are, there are different icons. And so if you click the one that looks like a Tic Tac Toe Board, that's called, I think it's Grid View. And then you actually show grid video and you actually expand, click and expand your screen, you should be able to see everybody. So that's what I'm going to be doing, so I can still recognize people to speak. So if you want to talk, if you just want to go like this, I mean, we don't, I'm not going to super stick to that, but it might help just not get everybody talking at the same time.
At the screen, yeah.
Let's see. Elise is going to make sure that you are unmuted when you are speaking. This is important for Peggy every time that, especially when you're making a motion or seconding it, if you could just say, "This is Jenna, this is Jeannie, I'm making a motion." Because she is going to be typing and will not always be able to look at the screen to see exactly who is talking. So that will help you, right Peggy? Okay, cool. All right, so I think, Elise, anything that I'm missing as far as directions?
I don't think so. Just other than if you can keep yourself muted when you're not speaking, that would be really helpful, just to reduce background noise. And then just unmute yourself before you're speaking, but if it looks like you're trying to speak, I'll try to unmute you here so that we can all hear you.
Awesome. Thanks, Elise.
You're welcome.
So we wanted to put this up closer to the top of the agenda, community input. So if folks just wanted to connect at the beginning and provide some input, they didn't have to sit through an entire Zoom meeting. So this is part of the agenda that allows members of the public to provide information to us, including on items that are not listed on the board agenda. So do we have anyone that wants to do that at this time? There's not really, I don't see anyone.
Nope.
All right. All right, so we will move on then to item six. Six A, under a public appearance, we have discussion on possible action regarding the scope of engagement with Quarles and Brady for proposed issuance of $1,325,000 Village of Oregon General Obligation Promissory Notes Series 2020A. The estimated fee is $9,750. Would someone like to make that motion to get it on the floor? Looks like Jerry is making the motion, and let's choose Amanda for the second. This is fun. This is like Hollywood Squares. All right, so I know, do we have Quarles and Brady on here, correct?
No.
No, okay. Anything that you want to say about this, Mike?
This is just part of the bonding process that we pay our legal counsel to look at these three issuance that we're going to look at tonight, review these three issuance.
All right, any questions or comments from board members on this? Just wave and Elise can unmute you. All right, then if no questions are coming, so call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries, 7:00. We're all here, correct? Counting, yes. Okay, excellent. Item 6B, discussion on possible action regarding scope of engagement with Quarles and Brady for proposed issuance of $3,715,000 Village of Oregon General Obligation Corporate Purpose Bonds Series 2020B. The estimated fee is $11,500. Who would like to make this motion?
Jeannie, I'll make it. Randy?
Okay, Randy's making the motion. Jerry is seconding.
I have a question.
You have a question? Go ahead, Jerry.
I do. Would it be possible for staff or someone, as we go through these various bond offerings, what we intend to do with the money? So in the event that somebody is viewing this at home or somewhere.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
So Jerry, we're just paying the attorney. Once we get done with these three things, the next three things, Dave will go into detail about them.
Very good.
Yep.
Cool. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, oh, I'm sorry, David, do you have a question?
Just a general question for all of these. In the documents that we sent out, I can't recall, we didn't propose an interest rate, is my assumption, that that's what people are going to, companies will come back with their proposal to us, correct?
So again, this is nothing to do with, this is a legal counsel overlooking the...
I understand that. I'm thinking about the three that are following. I didn't know when was the right time to ask the question.
You could, well, I think Dave can probably address that from others after this, David.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks, David. All right, anyone else? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item 6C, this is a discussion on possible action regarding scope of engagement with Quarles and Brady for proposed issuance of $1,055,000 Village of Oregon Taxable General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series 2020C. Estimated fee is $8,500. So motion, please. David makes a motion, Amanda is seconding it. Any questions on this one? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so now, oh, so again, item D. So this is a discussion with Dave Ferris from Ellers and possible action regarding Resolution 2013 authorizing the issuance and sale of $1,225,000 General Obligation Promissory Notes Series 2020A. So kind of a motion for this to get this started. I have a motion by Jenna and a second from Amanda. All right, is this where we're going to start talking? Okay, all right, so questions so far are, let's see. Or, sorry, does the fellow, yeah, want to talk? Sure, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, so Dave, would you want to go through the three issues? And then I think it'd be easier to vote on these resolutions after you've done an overview of them, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, so I've got three sale day reports that I'm going to share my screen so that I'm going through them and you're seeing what I'm talking about. The first one, I'll probably be a little bit more detailed on. The next two kind of have some duplication and I'll hit the high points that are different in those. So you wanted me to share my screen, right, Mike?
Elise, is it okay or you want to do it?
Otherwise, she's going to try to figure out.
Okay. I do have it up. Dave, I can give you the controls too, so you could scroll through this and point at things if you like.
Okay, well, because I've got it all pulled into one thing as well that I could share and it looks, you know, similar, but it would be on my screen going to you guys. Do you want to do that or you want, how do you want to do it?
So I think, I think we talked about that we only want Elise to be able to share her screen for security reasons.
Okay.
This is ridiculous. I can't believe...
What was that?
I don't know. Maybe that was example A of why we were only letting Elise share her screen.
That was me. I clicked on a wrong screen.
Oh, okay. Now we know what David's really thinking.
I'm like, uh-oh, what are we getting into here? Did you say at least that you could ever let me roll it?
My back pocket. That's ridiculous.
Dave, I just gave you permission to control my screen, so if you want to try scrolling, you can try that here.
Yeah, it's not doing anything.
It says, "Waiting for Dave Ferris to control your screen." If you have a request come up.
Well, the one thing it's showing, it says I can control your screen, but it's not giving me any kind of a...
Oh, there we go.
There we go, okay. All right.
Yeah, we're ready to go to outer space.
So we're learning as we go. I actually did one meeting last week for the city of Marshfield, so I'm a pro, I guess you might say. So thank you for allowing me to give you the sale results today. We actually had three sales for the village. As you know, since you just approved the legal part of these issues, there's a 2020A General Obligation Promissory Notes, a 2020B General Obligation Bonds, and the 2020C, which was the refunding of a state trust fund loan related to the TIC property development. So I was going to show you the capital projects if somebody asked a question, but I don't have a way to get that on the screen for you, but just so you know, the projects in the pre-sale report, which maybe in March you weren't on this call, or, because I think we were using Mike's cell phone when I was on, but there was a listing of all the projects, so maybe, Mike, you can, I don't know if you're able to get Elise maybe that schedule that shows all the projects, it's on like page seven of the 2020A pre-sale report.
Yeah, let me find it here. Okay, I can try to go through it.
Okay. So I can get started, though. Let me know when you're ready, Mike. So
Please.
We actually had really great, we have really great news for you. You know, the market has been crazy as far as the ups and downs, and you'll see when I get to the end of this report. I put in some, a graphic of what the rates have done. And I know the Village staff is a little bit worried, thinking that maybe we wouldn't sell things, but we're kind of, the last couple of weeks, things have stabilized and rates are kind of back down to just about the historic lows again. And you had some really good sales results, so we took advantage of some good timing and a couple of weeks of letting people kind of get used to the craziness. So on the next page is the summary of the sale of the General Obligation Notes. The notes financed some more maintenance-related street improvements, water projects and sewer projects. There's also some economic development-type things that, trying to see if I can see it real quick, that are related mainly towards TIF number five in this one, which were like some wayfinding signs or actually some downtown improvements that the staff had in the capital plan. There's also the design of the senior center building and some acquisition of equipment related to this. Couple of weeks ago, we had a conference call with Moody's and they asked a bunch of questions of the village and they did a great job. And Moody's came back affirming the village as a double A2. A little later on in the report, I'll show you the credit report where you can read some of the nice things they have to say about the village and what you have going on there. So that's a really good credit that we're able to maintain a really nice bond rating at this point. The number of bids that we received today was four. We'd like to see at least three, so you got more than that, that's great. The winning bidder was BOK Financial out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin. And the bidders are listed on the next page. So you have BOK at the 1.5086%, the high bid with Northland Securities at 1.710%. And the difference between the high and the low ended up saving you about $15,000. You know, that competition was able to get you some, you know, save some additional dollars because the underwriters are bidding against each other. This issue also, because they gave us a premium, which was about $76,000, when we use some of that to actually apply against some of the cost of issuance as well as paying for, or being, some being deposited into the debt service fund to pay for future interest because that's the underwriters' way of kind of making the issue attractive to investors is they will give the village money, we use it to pay down the interest in the first couple of years. And when we get back to the schedules, you'll see where we really don't have an interest expense in the first year or year and a half. So that's one way that they try to make this attractive to the investors. Then there is a leftover amount that when we talked with Village staff, that they kind of wanted to set aside for additional projects because there's some, you know, there'll be some engineering on future streets or whatnot that that money could be used for, that the rates were so good that if we had that additional amount available that instead of downsizing, that we would hang on to that money to apply to that next project. Let's see here. The money will come in on May 6th, so closing date is May 6th, and money will be wired into the village at that point, and then you'll be able to start paying for the projects that are funded by the notes. Did you get that scheduled up, Mike? Did you want to?
Yeah, I can just kind of read, I can kind of hit the highlights if people want me to do that. So yeah, this is back on March 16th, we went through this with the board. Some of the highlights is that we're going to be doing a security update in the Village Hall. That's actually something that we tabled at the last board meeting, you just may recall that, because we don't want the gentleman coming in during the COVID-19, but we'll be doing that over the next couple of years. We are borrowing money for our additional computer purchase. We have to change out our phone system. We're looking at replacing some squads that we do every year. We're doing, borrowing our share of the fire district equipment purchase. We're doing quite a bit of street work, including crack sealing and ship sealing and mill and overlay. We're doing the, obviously, the big road project is the Park and Jamesville intersection and Park Street. We're buying some equipment for Parks and Torre More. And then we're doing, excuse me, we're doing the Highlands and the other Wood Park, which we're going to talk about after Dave is done. We want to start doing some senior center building planning. We're borrowing money to continue our business park consulting on the southeast side of the village. And Dave sort of mentioned this, that we're doing some work in TID 5. That's mainly to do Mike White's facade grant that the board approved recently. And let's see here, TID 4, again, is the Park and Jamesville intersection project. And then in Water, we're talking about doing Lincoln Road, we're doing the Lincoln Road project. We're going to be doing a water main replacement or extension there. And then the sewer just talked a lot about INI elimination study and program, and then just some miscellaneous equipment at the treatment plant. Any questions on, I'm sorry. Any questions on the list?
You can probably email it out after the meeting too as well.
Yeah.
The schedule that you're looking at now is what we call our services and uses schedule. There's the estimate that we presented on March 16th. And so the projects, basically, project amounts basically stayed the same, but you'll see in the A version, final version, there's a little bit that's being retained for other projects. And in the B version, there's about 51,000 that can be used for future projects. Then the items that are, that were more up for bid today were some of the, like the bond council amounts, the rating, what the underwriter took for compensation. So we had in, I think it's $12.50 per thousand of bonds, it's kind of being the max, and they only took, they only took, they took less than that, so instead of taking the full 13,000, they only took 8,600. That's how we were able to have a little bit more money. And then this is the premium amount that we talked about, where they're kind of throwing money at the village to help the interest rates be higher in those early years for investors. But it ends up offsetting the interest expense for the village, and on one of the next couple of screens, you'll see where Village really won't have any interest expense for at least the first year and part of the second year, if not the full second year as well. That's the 67,000 in the A version and the 173,000 in the B version, where it's basically covering some of the first couple of years of interest. And like I said, that's a tool that underwriters use to make the bonds and the notes look more attractive. So after you take the project cost plus what you need to cover, the amount of the issuance cost, you get this same, this size of the issue, which is what you're approving tonight, is $1,325 for the A, the 3715 for the B, and then the taxable refunding on that issue. I'll talk a little bit more about this one when we get to the C issue. So that's how the sizing comes out. Any questions on that? So this schedule is a big one. I'm hoping you can see it all. I think it gets most of it. So the columns on the left that say that it's the existing debt minus the 2019 state trust fund loan. The reason that state trust fund loan's getting taken out of your existing debt payments is because we're refunding it with the C version or the C issue. And so this is the debt service that's left over after we take that issue out. So once we get the total amount we need for debt service, plus these new issues, and these are the structures that they sold for today, then there's an amount that other entities pay for, which the water utility has a, makes payments on these, both these issues, the A and the B, the sewer makes payments on the A and the B. And then TIF 4 and 5 have a portion of the A, B, and the C as well. I think TIF 5 is mostly the C issue. So once you take all those debt payments minus the amounts paid by other funds, we're left with how much goes to the debt service tax levy, which is what your taxpayer pays. And as you can see, in 20, I think you can get over it, come over here a little bit, there you go. 2020, your debt service equalized tax rate was about $1.20 per thousand valuation. And, you know, with the new issue, we're going to go up just slightly, do $1.21. But what we try to do when we structure your debt is have this tax rate be descending like this so that we have some room in future years for other projects. You know, there's certain things that you can kind of feather into this, like your normal street projects, but if you do something like a library or a senior center or a village center, those kind of projects are going to end up popping these up a little bit more. And when we end up doing the financial management plan later this year, you'll see how the effect of those other buildings, those larger projects, affect that tax rate. We've given you some information on what an average home would be paying. We've tried to structure this in such a way that it's be affected by a certain growth factor on that home. So it's 305,000 for 2020, but we have it factored in that there's growth on that $305,000 house. So we're trying to make it show that, you know, that there's a moving value there that's covering these debt payments. And as far as the way the debt issue turned out, and I told you about this in the summary, is we didn't downsize the issue, we retained those funds, but because of how the underwriter was trying to structure this for investment purposes, it looks like we have more interest, but then they throw this premium at it, which basically wipes out this first year of interest and a little bit of the second year as well. In the B issue, it wipes out the entire amount of the interest. So in the end, you're actually ending up with a $27,000 savings and financing cost on the A issue and $118,000, almost $119,000 savings on the B issue because of that premium offsetting some of that interest that they're, like I said, they're trying to make those investors find that first couple of years to be attractive. And I'll talk about the C issue later on. Any questions on that? So then this schedule is how the new 2020A breaks out, the levy pays for this portion of that issue. Here's a total million, 325, that we've been talking about. The water pays for this much sewer and TIF. And you can see those premiums are taking out basically all the interest in those first couple of years, or a part of at least a second year. And then this is your debt limit calculation. So a debt limit for a Wisconsin local government is 5% of the total taxable value in the village limits. So for the village, at the end of 2019, your TIF or your value was $1,232. So 5% of that amount is $61,619,000. I have a line in there for 50%. That's not your policy. You actually don't have a policy yet about the debt limit. I think it's something that we're going to discuss as part of your financial management plan as to what's an appropriate policy. Another line that I could have put on here is the 75% line. And what I, why I would point that out is because we typically tell our clients that that 75% is kind of the top of where you really want to be because you want to leave that other 25% for emergency purposes. But your percentage right now, after these borrowings, is, you know, just under 36%. You're very healthy, you've got lots of limit to be able to do the projects you want to do. And, you know, it's growing, you know, it's getting, the capacity is growing each year as you're paying down this debt, making it flexible for you to do those borrowings in the future for the projects you want to do. Any questions on debt capacity?
Okay, Jerry?
Yes, David, hi, how are you?
Good.
Thanks so far. I have just a comment on the debt capacity.
Sure.
I see we have plenty of capacity. We can borrow a lot of money if we wish. But isn't it true that we are limited by the amount that we want to raise taxes?
Yes. So, you know, that's kind of, that's kind of why back on, you know, this schedule, that we're kind of trying to keep that tax rate stable. And it's something else that we can talk about in the financial management plan is, you know, do we have a tax rate that we don't want to exceed? One key, when I was there, our limit was $2.25 per thousand. And we didn't really ever come close to it, but at least we had a policy in place that when we were kind of structuring our future debt, we knew we never wanted to exceed that amount. So I think it's something that, you know, as we do the financial management plan this year, we'll talk about things like, you know, what are you comfortable with as far as that policy for tax rate? What you're comfortable with as far as a debt capacity, you know, the, just for example, the policy I had when I was a finance director was this 50% line. And that last library that was built wasn't undertaken until we actually had room to do it. So that's kind of something that can help you make decisions on when you do capital projects.
Thank you, David. That answers my question. Now I have a question for Mike. Mike?
Sorry, Mike.
How do you feel about a policy like that?
Well, the board hired Ellers back in the fall to do this financial plan that Dave's talking about. So we look forward to talking to the board about that type of policy this year.
Okay, all right, so that's something where, is on the list for the year.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else before I go on?
Yeah, David.
Maybe as a follow-up to Jerry's first question, and I read his question a different way in that we're limited in how much we can borrow on what our tax rate or bill rate can be. But we aren't, are we also limited on how much we can increase that bill rate per year based on state law? If we can't pay it back because we can't increase the rate, do we not handcuff ourselves?
Well, it's, what you're talking about is levy limits, and general obligation debt payments are outside the levy limits. So the levy limit affects your operating revenue. Your debt service is outside of the levy limit, so that you kind of dictate how much you want to be able to go up on the debt service side of things.
Okay, thank you. That helps me.
Yep. Anybody else? Okay. The next report is actually in all three reports as well. This is your credit opinion from Moody's, where they affirmed you had a double A2. That's a very good rating for a village your size. You, you would definitely have to grow quite a bit to be considered a double A one. Um, you're very healthy, those. They, they, they definitely thought you have um, good, good, solid uh, reserves, liquidity. Um, they had a lot of good things to say in this report, so I encourage you to read through this report. And if you have questions, we'd be, you know, staff or, or Ellers would be happy to answer those questions.
Yes, say something.
Oh yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so, so David, I, this is one of the things that Lisa and I are going to want to talk to you about that I think we'll uh, want to talk to the board about this a little bit. We're doing the financial plan just to maybe dive into Moody's report a little bit. Sure. Just, that's later in the year.
Yeah, and one of our fir-, one of our first workshops that we do as part of the financial management plan actually digs into the, you know, what the, what the ratings are about and the categories, which actually, you know, just to kind of point out where the, where we'll kind of dive into when we get to that point is there's a nice little uh, report card in here. And we'll kind of look at how things look. Where do you compare to places that are maybe a double A one as far as value? Um, you know, take a look at what we can do to not have uh, B double A things pop up on here and just kind of get some strategies to, to make us look better in the rating agency's eyes.
Exactly. Thank you.
Yep. And then the last thing that I, that I wanted to show you in this report um, is just the craziness that has gone on in the last month. Um, when I came to visit you, we were probably right here at this bottom of this little V here. And, and it, as, as I told you, the staff was kind of a little worried about how things were going. But, you know, I kept telling them, you know, here's our old low, historic low. You know, it was still at the worst point of all the craziness was still better than it was at the, the previous historic low. So I said, you know, you're still going to get a great rate, but it's just that things are just so, you know, nobody really understands what to do. And, and luckily, we're at a point where things are kind of calming down. Cause this is two weeks in a row where rates have been pretty good, so.
Good for us.
Okay, is there another report you can pull up for me, the B, Elise?
Uh, yes. On the top, see where it's highlighted in yellow. You can click on the next one, is the twenty twenty B to the right.
Okay. Your picture was covering it up. This is the B, uh, the two thousand twenty B and, and this is bonds and bonds have um, some legal restriction on, on what they could be used for, so. That's goodness. Jerry, Jerry, you look a little different all of a sudden.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not in charge of that, okay?
So there's certain things that we use bonds for and certain things that have to be in notes. Uh, for the villages' purposes, we look at a couple of things when, with what we put into bonds versus notes. One, does it fit into the legal use of bonds? And two, how, you know, how is the repayment of the asset? So if it's an asset that gets um, probably depreciated over a shorter period of time, we try to put it in the notes. So the payback, payback period is a little bit shorter. Um, so these issues, uh, the projects that are in the B issue, uh, when you were look, when Mike was reading off this schedule of, of the projects are more of the bigger projects. So the Lincoln Roads or the Park and Jamesville intersections, there, there's some of the bigger projects, the more construction related as opposed to maintenance or equipment. So in this, in this issue, like I said, we've got, uh, we've got uh, street improvements, some fire department equipment. Park work, uh, some TIF four projects, sewer, uh, stormwater and water system projects. Um, this, this issue, we had five bidders. Um, BOK Financials out of Milwaukee, once again, won the bid. Um, they had the lowest bid at one seventy, one seven three five, and they're listing for this issue. As you can tell, they are at one point seven three five. They're actually pretty tight as far as the bids. Um, although I've never heard of this company before, so you got a bid from somebody I've never seen. You know, they, they're a little bit higher than everybody else, but the difference between the high and the low ended up saving you uh, about forty three thousand dollars. So competition is great. Um, as far as the premium on this one, we had two hundred and four thousand or premium. Some of it went to pay issuance costs, some of it was retained for future projects. And then some of it had to go to the debt service fund to pay for that interest expense on the first year or two, as we talked about on the last one. Uh, money comes in the same day. The sizing schedule we talked about already, so I'll, I'll brush by that one. We talked about this schedule as well, and, and like I said, that, you know, the premium on that hundred and seventy three thousand we showed you before is it basically it wipes out the first year's interest and a little bit of, you know, a good portion of the second year. Um, this one, the, the allocation is, you know, like I said, there's a levy portion of this issue, then water and sewer and TIF four will pay for some of this issue as well. And that's a breakout of the three million, seven fifteen that you're looking at today. We talked about the debt limit. Um, and so the rest of this report is uh, uh, same as the last one. Do you have any questions on the B?
No.
Okay. So the C is a little bit of a different animal. Um, what we do on an annual basis and, and more often when rates are going down like they do is try to take a look at what debt issues you have out there and, and see if we can save the village some money. Uh, this issue actually is uh, a refunding of a state trust fund loan that you took out about a year ago um, for the TICI development. Um, it was a million dollars for the state trust fund loan. The interest rate was probably in the four percent somewhere. And so, uh, we, we came to the pre-sale with a, a sized bond of about, or yeah, sized refunding bond of a million fifty five. We got really good bids in the day. We were able to pull twenty thousand dollars off of that pre-sale number. So you, you're now approving this for a million thirty five thousand. Um, we had, uh, like I said, that was for refunding that state trust fund loan, which is related to the TICI project. Uh, and actually, we actually had a call with, uh, I don't know, you want to talk about this, Mike? Do you want me to talk about it?
Can you go ahead?
Okay, we actually uh, had a, a conference call with uh, Jason Ticey this afternoon, uh, showed him the results. And he uh, was very uh, excited about the fact that we were going to save some money, not only for, for uh, their developments as far as some of the, the costs that they have to cover in the short term. It reduces some of their, their commitment that they have to do if we can afford to, to pay for the debt payments on this one. But in the long run, the TIF actually ends up um, in the good too. Uh, lots of good savings and, and you know, obviously if we're paying out less interest expense for the TIF, we, you know, we collect the increment and we close faster. Or maybe there's projects you will do in that TIF that will be, uh, there'll be money available that you'll be able to do it because we aren't using it to pay interest. So on this issue, we have um, five bidders, which is good again, we're above the three. Uh, the low bid, this is a taxable issue, meaning that we, we don't have the ability to use a tax exempt borrowing. And the reason it's taxable is because you're funding something that is uh, ba-, it's basically a private use. So it's a developer that you're kind of helping out in the situation. So it's not like you're building infrastructure streets for the village. Uh, it's, it's, you're helping out a private developer, so you're not allowed to use tax exempt financing for those kind of borrowings. So in this case, we had to use a taxable uh, refunding, which is what the state trust fund loan was as well. The low bid in this case, and you can see the difference between a tax exempt and a, and a taxable is, in this case, was about a hundred basis points. Um, about a percent. A low bid was two point seven eight nine from a place called Bernardi Securities out of Chicago, Illinois. Uh, they're typically not a low bid, so it was very impressive to see them in to win this bid. Um, so the bidders on this one, you had on this page, Bernardi came in at the two seven nine, and the high bid was at uh, three, almost three oh two. So the difference between those two bids, yeah. Difference between those two bids is about twenty six thousand dollars that we saved by the competition there. Oh, let's see here. Um, I'll show you the savings report a little farther down that talks a little bit about this issue. Um, once again, we'll get the money in on May sixth. However, we have to give the state trust fund um, a notice that says we'll pay this off, and that should be happening. Does it say it on here? Uh, I don't see the date on here, Mike, but we have a letter uh, already put together that we're going to send out to you tomorrow that you can send into the state trust fund loan saying that you're going to, you're going to. So that'll be.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, let's see. So this was a little different animal. We don't really have project costs. Um, so it's about a million dollars of principal that we're going to pay off on May twenty seventh. There's the date I was looking for. Um, estimated amount about nine thousand dollars. I think that letter will probably nail that down a little bit closer. It'll be pretty close to that though. Um, if not right on, on the nose. So on, we'll get the money in on May sixth, uh, and we'll be able to pay that off on May twenty seventh. Uh, there's some issuance costs with that as well. Uh, we did get a, a premium on this one, but because we don't have any future things to spend this on, it's going to happen right now. It actually is one of the reasons that we're able to downsize this issue by twenty thousand. So thirteen thousand of it came from there, and some of it came from some savings on some of the issuance costs up here a little bit. So that's why we were able to downsize that to a million thirty five. Um, we kind of went through this schedule. Really, this issue, the C, uh, it stretches it out so that it fits the tax, the TIF district cash flow better. Uh, but mo-, all of this here is paid by revenues right here. So this issue here had nothing to do with the increase in the tax look, okay? And then this is the savings report I was talking about earlier. Uh, when we showed you this report back at the pre-sale, we thought we'd have about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars of savings with the, the interest rates that we got today. We are wa-, saving about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars from what the initial loan was to what we sold the bonds for today to refund that. So uh, typically this percentage of twelve point seven percent, we're looking for stuff that's above three percent. So you can see you got a really good savings on this issue. And the present value just means that we're taking the future cash flows and dating them back to today's dollars. So in today's dollars, this is worth a hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars.
Really good.
Um, and the rest of the report is the same material. Um, so I'd be happy to answer anything on the C.
Any questions from anybody? Yeah, Jerry.
Yes, thank you. Um, I have a question for David. Uh, David, um, because we don't know what's really going to happen to the economy right now, we're going to uh, have that, we, well, we already had the bond sale, right?
Yeah.
So we're going to have these, we're going to have funds for various projects. What if we decide not to do the project? What, is there a penalty? Or I, I guess, what if economic environment causes us to not do a project?
Well, you have a, a two-year window to pay, actually in a construction contract, you have about three-year window to pay for a pay-down proceeds. So you have some time that if you had a little delay, that you would still be able to um, use these on a future project. So if you delayed your projects, the money just needs to be spent by the end of that three years.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? So Peggy, do we have a motion and a second? Item six D?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
And we need to do a roll call vote, I believe.
Okay.
Correct, yes.
All right, are we ready to vote on these then, one at a time here, team?
Yeah.
All right. Is Jenna still with us? I lost her on my screen.
Yep.
Can't see you, but I'm here.
Okay, cool. All right, so uh, we have a motion and a second. Um, on item sixty, this is the resolution twenty thirteen for the series twenty twenty A bonds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call, sorry. All right, Peggy, go ahead.
Okay. Glish?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Folic?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so then item six E, uh, this is um, possible action regarding the resolution twenty fourteen awarding the sale of three million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series twenty twenty B. Would someone like to make this motion? Randy?
I'm.
All right, and then Amanda, seconding, any discussion on this one? All those in favor say aye.
Roll call.
Oh, sorry, roll call.
Horton?
Yes.
Glish?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Folic?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and then item F is uh, taking that possible action on resolution twenty fifteen, authorizing the issuance and sale of one million, fifty five thousand dollars, uh, series twenty twenty C. So um,
It should be a million thirty five thousand.
Okay. This is a motion for a million thirty five thousand. Would someone like to make that motion, Randy? And then a second by uh, Amanda? And then roll call, please.
Uh, hold on just a second here. Carpenter?
Yes.
Jacobson? Yes. Donovan?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Glish?
Yes.
Folic?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
All right, so those motions carry. Thank you so much, Dave, for being on our call tonight.
Thank you for letting me present.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good night, have a good meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
All right, then moving on to item six G, this is a discussion with Ross Rutler, and Ross is with us. Um, and possible action regarding the Highlands of Netherwood Park development project. I just read these recommended motions so that we know what we're talking about. Um, the first recommended motion is to award contract A, general site construction to South Central Contracting in the amount of eight hundred forty three thousand nine dollars, which includes alternate bid A one in the amount of thirty two thousand and alternate A two in the amount of thirty five thousand five fifteen. We have another recommended motion to award contract B, building construction to Meyer Construction in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. And we have a recommended motion three to approve the amendment to contract A to include corn play surfacing for playground area to improve accessibility in amount of fifty six thousand, four twenty five. A formal change order will be prepared for a future board meeting. So those are things that we're going to be discussing. Um, Jeff, did you have a change on one of those?
Just, yes, on um, the original one, um, we would not and he not be doing A one for thirty two thousand. Um, and then with the savings of that, we would be putting that towards the, the solid surfacing. The A, the A one is just the protective netting. Um, holes and netting and, and that's, we'll have to see if we need that in the long run.
Okay, so what, what's the correct um, total then for item G one?
Mike has that from earlier today.
Well, I, I did it with the uh, um, with contingency. Contingent, so, so uh, Rutler's using seven percent contingency, right, Ross?
That is correct, yep. We would definitely recommend as part of the project maintenance, seven percent.
So, so. I'm sorry. So then with contingency, it would be eight, eight, six, seven, seven, eight, zero.
Okay.
Yep.
Just so I know, and if we make the motion to what to read, okay?
Yep.
And then we're crossing out alternate bid A one, right, Jeff?
Correct.
All right.
It was just our recommendation.
Sure, gotcha. Um, so do we want to have um, Mike or Jeff, do you want to introduce this first and then have Ross kind of give us details?
Sure. Um, all right, so yeah, this, so this is Highlands of Netherwood Park. This is obviously the land that was dedicated to the village, um, right off of Netherwood Road um, at the new Highlands of Netherwood subdivision. It is, um, this is kind of our first official new park. Uh, you know, with, with the equipment and playing fields and, and parking lot and everything like that. And, and bathrooms in a very, very long time period. So we're, we're very excited about this. Um, it's going to be, it's going to solve a, a lot of things for us and, and not only providing a, a nice amenity on that end of town, but it's going to provide a, a very well-designed, well-drained, well-maintained playing field that will handle soccer, lacrosse, ultimate. Um, I mean, we're calling it a playing field, so it's uh, you know, it can handle a lot of different things. Um, as you can see, and, and we're also going to, but we got some great bidding and during a very, you know, touchy time again as well. Um, and the alternate that we're recommending um, for the sod versus grass will get us, hopefully buy us almost an entire season of play. hopefully buy us almost an entire season of play that we wouldn't normally have. That's assuming we're having, having a a play, uh, ability by that time, which we will, but, uh, um, and then, you know, just the solid surfacing. That's something, when, when we got favorable bids back on the construction, we asked this of Ross to give us a, an estimate on what the solid surfacing is and, and, and he could talk about it, but it's basically a port-in-place product. Um, we are trying to make this playground have some accessible features with it, both in the, the merry-go-round, the swings and other stuff, uh, and, um, the wood chips. You can push the wheelchair, it's not very, you know, it's not as accessible and, and, uh, handicap accessible. So we think this is a, a really great opportunity to, to try this and do this, and then also for long-term maintenance. Um, we fight thistles all the time in our, in our wood chips and this might be a, this could be a product that would last, Ross, twenty years or more and, uh, hopefully, and, uh, so that's why we have this before you.
All right, um, let's see. Questions from, uh, board members? Yeah, Jenna?
Not really a question, more of a statement, but I really like that we're working on accessibility that stood out to me when I was reading this and I thought that was great. So, just wanted to call out.
Um, one thing I wanted to, uh, ask Mike. Is, is this money coming, is the majority of this money will be coming from park funds or will this money hit the levy?
Well, so we're gonna, we just went through this with Elwood Day from elders, so we're borrowing a million dollars for this project. Uh, but what we, what we showed back on March sixteenth is that we have some previous borrowing that we're gonna also apply to this, this project as well. Well, so we have enough money to cover the project easily, but I think what Lisa and I are gonna, are most likely do for at least a couple years to try to levy the levy, uh, the levy, level of levy, yeah, that's easy to say. Um, is probably use park, not park fund money, but park improvement fee money, impact fee money to pay the debt service on, on this money for the park.
Okay.
So i- rather than using, rather than levying to, to pay for the debt service for this park, we're probably gonna use impact fees. And for example, we collected almost a hundred thousand dollars last year of impact fees. And, and those are the ones we, we, we get when somebody issues a, we issue the building permit to somebody.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, Cory?
Jeff, if we end up needing that A one alternative with the netting, is that easy for us to add in the future?
Uh, Ross is shaking his head yes.
Yeah, Cory, so.
I'm gonna go with the center square for the, uh, for the win.
So, so adding that and adding out a future date, it's very easily, it's a, it's a footing with a sleeve that can easily be added. Uh, it's outside the playing surface, so you have no worries there, but, uh, something very easily added in the future, absolutely, so. Um, what I, what I'd like to add here too is that, um, well, on behalf of Rutler, thank you so much for including us as part of these projects. Uh, the first park in your, in your community here within, with, over the past forty years, so we're very happy for you. Um, the timing, uh, I guess I'd like to applaud the village, the timing of this project was done, uh, it was well-planned. Uh, bidding commenced at a great time prior to all this occurring and your bids came back very, very favorable. Um, and based on the budget that was initially developed, um, your, your qualified little bidders for both contract A for the general site construction and the playground construction came back very favorable. Um, and also for the, as part of contract B, the building construction came back very, very favorable. So, um, we did our due diligence, reviewed the results, uh, along with reviewing the, the contractors and their past work. Um, and are very comfort, uh, comfortable with both South Central Contracting, who's done quite a bit of work uh, in the, in the, the village at your high school facilities. And then Meyer, who also has done quite a bit of work and, uh, what's exciting is both of these groups are, are very local in your area as well, so. Um, we're here tonight to, to answer any questions you would have with regards to design, um, and the project moving forward, so.
Any, any further questions or if someone's ready to make a motion, we could do that. Jenna, do you wanna make a motion?
Yeah.
All right, so Jenna, um, do you want to make motion G one that we award contract A, general site construction to South Central Contracting in the amount of eight hundred sixty-seven thousand seven hundred eighty dollars? And that includes alternate A two, right, Jeff? In the amount of thirty-five, five, five-on-five. Okay, so we have a motion, is there a second?
Cory will second it.
All right, Cory will second it. Thanks Cory. Discussion or questions? All right, then I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so then we have an item two, um, so I would entertain a motion to award contract B building the construction to Meyer Construction in the amount of two hundred fifty thousand seven hundred thirty dollars.
Favorable.
A motion by Dave, a second by Randy. Any discussion on this one? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And then, uh, the third, uh, motion that I would entertain would be to approve amendment to contract A to include pour-in-place surfacing for the playground area to improve accessibility in the amount of fifty-six thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars. And then Jeff will, or someone will, um, uh, provide a formal change order for a future board meeting. So, would you like to make that motion? All right, so Rand, motion by Randy, seconded by Amanda. Although, oh, uh, David, do you have a comment?
Just a question to have Jeff clarify his previous comment that they were gonna use the funds saved on uh, A one, the subcontract A one, to help with this one. I didn't understand what he was getting on.
We just were reducing the, the overall contract price by, by removing, because the original motions in there were to include A one, A two and the, uh, solid surfacing. And our feeling was is to reduce the overall cost a little bit, or all by thirty-two thousand would be to remove A one from the contract.
But you won't, you won't reduce the amount by that thirty-two thousand?
No, we did.
Or of the total?
The total.
Of the total, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any, any other questions? All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you so much. Ross really appreciate you being on the call today.
Thanks a lot, guys. We're very excited to be part of the project.
Thank you.
Jeff, go ahead, your raise in your hand there.
Yeah, I just, I wanna compliment Rutler Corporation. I think Mike would, would support this.
And Elise.
And Elise, uh, would support this. I mean, we've worked with Ross for, uh, well, not only on J.C. Park for quite a while and, and countless revisions, but they were the natural selection choice when we wanted to start looking at the Highlands of Netherwood Park. They've done an outstanding job of meeting, um, staff's, uh, kind of thoughts and concepts for out there as well as some of our budget.
Changing ideas.
Changing and ideas and layouts, and then to just provide us with a very nice rendering for our signs and everything like that. So I just, I know, uh, it's just nice to be able to work with professionals on this that really do know what they're doing and, and they do a very, very nice job. So we're look, and they're gonna follow this through to completion.
Thank you, thank you very much, Jeff. We take a great deal of pride in working with your community. Uh, it has been, it has been wonderful and, uh, we're very excited to see this project kick off, um, with all the challenges that we have surrounding us. I think it'll be a very positive addition to your community moving forward here and we'll be ready to start construction here very quickly, so.
Yep, agree.
Now we have to figure out what color the surfacing's gonna be, right?
You bet, you bet.
I'm not picking it.
I'm picking neon green.
Whatever you guys want, so.
No. Yeah, all right.
Great.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so moving on, item seven, we have no minutes. Item eight, we have approval of vouchers. So we have a voucher list for March thirty-first and a voucher list for April twentieth. Uh, Peggy, would you like us to do these separately, probably? Yes, you want these, do these separately?
Um, you can do them separately if you would like to. I haven't ready either way, so.
Oh, okay, cool. All right, would anyone like to, love, let's do them together then. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the vouchers for March thirty-first and April twentieth? Jerry would like to make the motion. Is there a second? Randy is doing the second. All right, Jerry, what questions do you have?
Well, you know, I, uh, I had a hard time finding anything to even question on this, but, but, uh, there were some, uh, Jeff, there was some work done up at the cemetery and, uh, it looks like you rented equipment to do tracking.
Correct, correct.
What is, what is that?
Those are, those are, uh, well, Elise, you can mute Jerry, right?
Always. Definitely.
No, there, those were additional tracking pads and the tracking pads we've used, I, it's been something I've implemented in the last couple of years 'cause we were digging graves in very wet conditions and they were just rubbing things out and it looked awful and so I've, I've insisted now that when we do stuff up there with, you know, soft ground conditions, if they use tracking pads, and we just needed some more of those.
So those are just big rubber pads then?
Yep, yep.
Okay, got it. That's the, the only question I have. You made me work for that one.
Other questions on vouchers? All right, Peggy, do you wanna do a roll call for these?
Yes. Uh, Horton?
Yes.
Bollig?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Glish?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item nine A, uh, proclamations and announcements. Board comments. Who has, who has a comment that they'd like to make? Yes, Jerry?
I, I like, just like to compliment the staff on the last election. It was so well-done. And, uh, the turnout was a lot larger than I even expected. So that surprised me also, but again, good job, staff.
Definitely, yes.
Thank you.
Other board comments?
I have one more.
Oh, go ahead, please.
Yes, and, uh, a- and Elise, you can mute Jeff, right?
We're so late, Jerry.
So, um, no, you, the, the work you're doing on Butter Creek, that's great. I can't believe how much better that looks down there.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, we've been cleaning up after we took out all those trees out of Thompson Park. Uh, the guys have been out there working on filling in those holes, grinding stumps and dressing up that banquet. Our hope is to get that whole area looking nicer.
Well, tell everybody they're doing a great job down there.
Will do.
Jeff, it almost looks like there might be room, like, you know, for, um, a soccer field or something by the time that you guys get done. He's ignoring me. Okay, cool. Yes, Amanda.
Um, I just wanna, uh, also compliment, uh, all the staff at the Village Hall and everywhere in the Village Public Works, everybody who's, uh, during this time, I mean, the last time we met, this was all just beginning, uh, you know, the police department, every, everybody has been, has really stepped up and worked hard. And in particular, the village, uh, you know, Mike, uh, so Mike, Mike's been working hard to keep people employed, to keep, uh, money flowing to as many people as possible. Uh, and I, I think that says a lot about what we value in this community and, uh, I just shout out to all you guys. Been great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other board comments? All right, thank you, everyone. Uh, staff comments. So we have some upcoming meetings, um, our Tuesday uh, meeting, which would have been tomorrow, the organizational board meeting has been rescheduled to May fourth. Um, and, uh, Mike is going, if he hasn't already, is gonna ask, uh, you folks to send, are they sending emails back to you, Mike, or are they sending them to me?
To, to Eugene and then she's seeing me on it, so.
All right, yeah.
I did that last week. I asked him to do that.
Oh, hey, thanks.
Yeah.
So if you haven't done it yet, um, tell me if you, um, if you have changes to any committees that you'd like to be on. I can't promise anything, but it's nice to know what, what you enjoy doing, 'cause, uh, this job is a little bit more fun when you can, um, do the things that you're passionate about. Uh, we have another meeting Monday, um, oh no, uh, same meeting, Monday, May fourth. Well, so what, what, that'd be a regular board meeting as well, too, right?
Correct, yep.
Yeah. And then we have a meeting on Monday, May eighteenth, um, begins at six P M. So will these all be Zoom meetings, Mike?
Yes. I think for the, for the future, excuse me for future, we're gonna be doing these, yep. And the reason we're starting at six o'clock on the eighteenth, that's the board review meeting on the eighteenth of May.
Oh, goodie.
Yeah.
All right, any questions on that from anyone? All right, so moving on to item ten, uh, uh, item A, so we have a review of spring election and presidential preference. We have a note from our village administrator. Thank you to the election workers and village employees for their tremendous efforts before and during election day and elections, uh, follow-up memorandum from the village of Oregon Election Department staff is included in the packet. So, um, uh, thank you. I, I second that. That thank you to everyone. I know you all worked really, really hard and, um, so I don't know, some of you were probably there for more than twenty-four hours at a stretch. So thank you. It was a very trying time. I'm glad that you are all, all healthy. That's a good thing.
Yep, thank you.
All right, um, going on to item ten B, this is a discussion on possible action regarding the village administrator's recommendations regarding the police chief position. If some background information, uh, Jennifer Pagan cough was appointed acting police chief by the police commission on February thirteenth, twenty twenty. And since that time, she has thoroughly demonstrated she is highly qualified to be the next Oregon police chief. Her display of steady leadership during the ongoing COVID nineteen crisis is another reason why I feel confident making the following recommendations. I recommend the village board consider approving the following two motions. So I will read these, uh, for the record, these are recommended motions from Mike. Um, the first motion recommended by Mike is that the village board recommends to the police commission that acting police chief Pagan cough be appointed as Oregon's next police chief by the commission and that the village board members appreciate the commission considering this recommendation from the village board. Uh, and that the second motion, uh, recommended would be that we, uh, recommend acting chief Pagan cough's annual salary be increased from one oh one, five forty-three to one hundred nine thousand five hundred thirteen upon her appointment by the police commission. And a note that former police chief Yule's annual salary was one hundred nine thousand five hundred thirteen. Um, so I know that the village board knows this, but for anyone watching, um, and for the minutes, I think it's super important to remember that the village board, uh, we do not make this appointment. This is the police commission and, um, we are actually very fortunate that the police commission actually asked our opinion. Uh, the chair asked us to make a recommendation and so we are making a recommendation. I just want to make sure that we recognize the commission's authority and respect their authority and know that at the end of the day, this is, um, a recommendation and the commission does what they believe is best. So, um, I just think that's important just for the public to know. We have a police commission for a reason and so they'll be doing their job. Mike, when do they, when do they meet?
Um, they, they meet when they're on call. I mean,
Oh, okay.
It, it, it's, you know, like when they're gonna do a hiring process for a police officer, you know, they set meeting dates. They don't meet on a regular schedule.
Okay, so they'll have to, um, once they get a recognition from us, then they'll have to schedule a meeting.
Exactly, yep.
Gotcha, okay. Um, any comments, uh, or discussion on this or anyone want to make a motion? Yes, Randy?
So, I, I thought of a lot about this over the weekend. And, um, I have reservations about the process. I have, I have no reservations about the acting police chief. But the reservations about making the re- the recommendation to ju- just appoint her, somehow that just goes against what I believe is fair, that it should be an open process. And so if, if that's just me, I just need to sort of get that out to the other board members, that that makes me feel uncomfortable, that I don't, that, that it, I, I need it to be a fair process, that anybody could, and I know that there's issues with that, but I, I just have to say it because otherwise it'll eat me alive. Um, I, I try to be sort of a fair person and so I just, it, I'm on the record uncomfortable with that process. I have no reservations about the, about the acting, okay?
All right, yeah, thank, thank you, Randy. Jenna?
I would piggyback off of Randy's comments. Uh, I think that interim chief Pagan cough would be an excellent chief. I also know that I have been approached by community members who would like to have some input in the process and I worry specifically because of all the, the COVID nineteen- have some input in the process and I worry specifically because of all the COVID-19 issues that they, they might not feel that that has happened if we don't have some sort of process where they can provide feedback. And so I'm not sure what that would look like. I haven't gone through something like this before, but I think I would be remiss for not saying that, that they would like their voices heard in a way that they feel like they can have an impact in the process.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to think what that would, would be, how, because we don't, I'm trying to think how that, how that would happen.
Yeah, I know. I, I agree with you because it can't, you know, I think pre-COVID-19, we probably would have had a, a meeting for something where people could have, could come and speak about it or, so I'm not exactly sure what that needs to look like, but.
I'm trying to think, and I'm just trying to think process. Mike, are, are interviews open to the public?
Typically not.
Yeah.
Typically, the, a board or council or commission, I mean, they can do whatever process. They, they can do a, a public interview process where people come and ask questions of the candidates, you know, that you watch the city of, not the city of Madison, Madison School District, the superintendent. But typically, when you're gonna do interviews, you actually notice it as a closed session.
Okay, so, yeah. So I'm thinking the only, the only way really the public would have input on it was like if, I'm thinking like if we had, if we had three candidates that we chose, you have like a meet and greet with those three candidates? Have we, we've, we've done something like that before, I think?
We, we haven't, um,
Okay.
We haven't done that. Well, I will, now that the public, we've, we've done that with, with elected officials and certain people in the community, but we haven't, you know, like just said, here are three people on, on May 20th are gonna be, these are our three top candidates for this particular, or especially this job or something. And not just for police chief, but it could be for any job. And you come in, you can ask them questions and they get, they each get to answer the same question or something, you know, somebody has to come up with some, some ground rules as well.
The last time that we hired the police chief, I was on the, the panel to interview folks. And I can tell you, once we got down to the, the top three candidates, those candidates started working our community because they all showed up at the Rotary meeting one week and introduced themselves. And I was like, oh, that's interesting. So I guess Jenna, I guess like if, if we did something like that, the candidates could always sort of work the community too, you know what I mean? I'm just trying to figure out a, a way that it would, it would work.
Yeah, and I, I know that, you know, interim chief Pagan cough has, has done that. You can see by the write-up that she's provided for us here, right, that, that she has done a lot of those things. I just know that in the conversations that I've had, there's still people who wanna have that opportunity before we make a decision. And so I wanted to make sure I called that out.
Okay. Other, other comments or opinions? Otherwise, like, oh, yeah, go ahead, Amanda.
Thanks. Yeah, I, I tend to agree with Randy and Jenna. I also am wondering if this is something, this public input that we're talking about, is that the village's responsibility or is that the police commission's responsibility? I, I mean, you know, there's, there's different ways that we could do it. I think we could make it work. I, I would rather attempt it and be more transparent personally. Yeah, I, I feel like our, our motion to the police commission could be more like, you know, we recommend that they put a, a process in place. They're the ones who are gonna have to decide what it looks like. But we can still say that, well, right now, Chief Pagan cough is the front runner. I mean, we, I, I, he's been doing a great job. I wish, I think fantastic chief, but in the interest of transparency, I think we owe it to our community to go through a more public process.
Thank you.
So may I respond to that, Jenny, for a second?
Please.
Thank you. So I told this to, to Randy this morning when I talked about this. So when I was looking for an administrator job, number of years, more than a number of years ago now, I, I would always ask the consultant, is there an internal candidate? And they would say yes or no. And when they would say yes, I'd always say, well, am I gonna get a fair shake to get interviewed and, and get the job? Absolutely. I never got the job and they give it to the inside person. And so if, if everyone is happy with what Jenny's doing, is it really fair to go out and make people go through the, if I can use this term, the hassle of applying for a job, putting their name out there because you, because when you become finalists in the state of Wisconsin, your name is released to the public. And if Jenny is already our favorite, as somebody that just said, why put people through that process, including Jenny? And that's why I made these recommendations. I, I don't feel we're gonna gain anything. So that's just my opinion on that.
Randy, go ahead.
So just to follow up, and, and Mike, I've been in that same position. I, I get that. I get, I get the, the issues with that procedure. Part of my concern is public perception that how was this gonna look, that we did, that people are gonna see it as an unfair process. I think she's wonderful. I mean, I think she deserves the, but, but we, we have the, the village residents to answer to. And I just don't want it to be seen as it wasn't an open process, transparent and fair. If, if she's, if she's gonna rise to the top, she's gonna rise to the top.
Jenna, go ahead.
Um, and maybe part of the solution would be to wait on the recommendation and figure out a way that we could help interim chief Pagan cough facilitate some of those conversations that probably would have happened without, if the COVID-19 hadn't happened. And, you know, figure out a way to get that done. We have a listening session with the board on Zoom. I'm not sure exactly. Work on the details, but just wait a little bit on the recommendation so we can try and iron out some, how we can facilitate those conversations and then see if that works or helps.
I, I think frankly that we're probably in a lose-lose situation either way. Because I, I said this to Mike this morning, I said, you know, I remember when they were hiring the executive directors of the overshare center, the last two times, they did national searches both times. And then both times they hired the interim person. And the city of Madison got crucified for that, for spending hundreds of thousands of dollars for doing national searches. But they are transparent, right? So either, either way, we're gonna be criticized. And so I think we just need to make a decision of which way you want to be criticized. I would rather be criticized for saving the village money because I think Jennifer is the best candidate and moving forward with her. And I don't see a practical way to have the public involved in this because you have to remember the village board, we don't, this isn't our process. This is the police commission. And those, those interviews are, are closed. So I guess if there, if there are public folks that want to have an opinion, they need to be, Mike, what, they send the police commission a letter? I mean,
Yes. Yep. I, I would, I would, for example, if somebody wanted to do that, watching this and they wanted to get, I would, I would send that to, we should keep, we should keep Jenny out of this. We would send that to Rudy, Rudy Trace at the police commission. Or, or they can send it to me and I can forward it to, to Rudy, either one, either to myself or to Rudy at the PD.
Yeah, I mean, Jenna, I totally get what you're saying. I'm just, I'm thinking how this works as a bureaucracy process because the police commission does it, not the village board. And, and the only reason I wasn't on the interview committee was I was like the village board rep. I was one of many on, and there was, there was two or three rounds of interviews. It was a long, long process. There was two set, by the way, there was two sets of interview panels. I was on one with, I remember Mike was on it, can't remember who else. And then, oh, yeah, Steve Staton. And there's, there's more of us. And then there was a whole nother interview panel of all area police chiefs, retired chiefs. There was probably six or seven of those folks. And so people came in for an entire day process. There's a written, a written process. They did two verbal interviews. And they went through all that twice. So they took two days out of their lives. So I just want you all to know of what you're gonna be putting people through when they may already perceive that we have a favorite candidate. I mean, I have no problem saying, I'm saying it right now in public, my favorite candidate is Lieutenant Pagan cough. So I'm also down on the police commission. So maybe the police commission has a different idea. The fact that the police commission did a very, they normally don't do this. They asked for the village board's recommendation. That did not happen last time. They,
That's true.
I mean, not to be mean, but they didn't care what we thought. They said, we're gonna do what we're gonna do. So I,
We, yeah, the last time we, we, we ended, we did the interviews and then we sent them three names, I believe.
Hi, Olivia.
Hey, Matt, can you mute yourself there, buddy?
Oh, when I got there, I just,
Thank you.
It looks like Amanda has a question.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Go ahead, Amanda.
Question. It was more like, I, I, I understand. I'd like to avoid additional costs of having to do a national search. That all makes sense to me since we have a great candidate right now. I'm wondering if there's a way. Maybe Lieutenant Peg and cough, you're on the call, maybe you would be open to this. There's nothing to, to stop you as acting chief with having a public listening session. And reaching out to various groups and doing a, a larger virtual community discussion where people could ask you questions. And then at the end of that, people could submit their feedback to the police commission based on their thoughts. And, and then, you know, the police commission is gonna do whatever, but I, it would allow for that act, interaction that Jenna was talking about. We haven't, you haven't had time as acting chief yet to interact with the public in the way you normally would have because of COVID-19. So if we could find a way just to have those conversations, then maybe that would allay a lot of the, the fears that some community members have or questions that they have. And then I'd feel comfortable with a recommendation of pointing pegging off. But there has to be a way for public input. So that's just an idea, throwing it out there before we do this recommendation.
So, so Amanda, I just wanna make, so there has to be a way for public comment? Well, for the, Well, you know, we, we don't ever do that when we hire anyone, right? So that's, that's, that's something new.
I'm, well, yeah, it might be new, but I'm,
Yeah.
I'm okay. I mean, people can comment. They, they can, the thing is normally people would be interact, people would be able to interact with Chief Pagan cough at a public event, ask questions or get to know her better. And everyone stay at home and, and I don't see, there hasn't been the public interaction that we had all sort of hoped for in the last 60 days during her acting chief stint, you know what I mean? So I'm trying to look for a way that the public can get to know her and feel more comfortable with her before we say yes, point her. That's all.
So what you're saying, so like, so when we hired Elise, we, we didn't do that. Should we have had publics listening sessions for Elise when we hired her?
No, I feel this is different because the, it, the, the police chief is a very public-facing role. And, and there are certain perceptions, relationships that, you know, people have with police that's very different from village hall officials. I, I don't, I don't see that as a good comparison. You know, normally we, we were, we, the chief had done coffee with a cop, you know, and, and allow for public input while he was chief. And I don't see how this is any different because it's a way for people to get to know Chief Pagan cough and, and and be more comfortable with a decision that, or a recommendation that might be.
Yeah, Corey.
I guess I, I don't, I don't see interim chief Pagan cough as needing to, I guess, carry that responsibility. You know, this is a separate decision in the way that I look at it. I think I have seen processes for fire chiefs and for police chiefs where there was a public kind of meeting the candidates when it was narrowed down to a handful of people. I don't know that we have to go that far. I think if we have heard some feedback that people want to know that we're following our typical process, I think our typical process would be to put out an advertisement and see who comes in and, you know, yes, we all have all of the faith in the world in, in interim chief Pagan cough. But I think the perception is we've had a problem with our, you know, police department in the past and way people get treated and things like that. So I think, you know, we do need to be a little bit sensitive that we aren't just slamming the door on what our typical process is. That being said, you know, we're being asked for a recommendation here. Ultimately, you know, it's, it's not our decision even to make aside from a recommendation. So my recommendation would be to follow a, an inexpensive way to recruit candidates. So if there is somebody that someone in the community feels should have the opportunity to apply, that they have a mechanism to do that. Because, you know, we truly never, you know, know someone might apply that, that completely throws us for a loop that we were never expecting. And I think, you know, that's kind of what it sounds like the community is looking for, to allow that to happen.
All right. Does someone, oh, Jerry, go ahead.
Yes, I've been listening to this discussion with interest. Again, Corey said something that has been stated several times now, and that's that this is not our decision. And to extend that a little bit further, in the past, they'd never even asked us what we thought when it came down to this decision. So I think we have to be sensitive not to offend the, the police commission. Number two, there's the financial issue. It'll cost 10 grand to go out and do, have a consultant do a search and deliver to us candidates to interview. And when I look at the first two things I mentioned, or think about them, and then I look at Acting Chief Pagan cough's list of qualifications, I'm blown away by the qualifications that she has. And I can't imagine going through a process and having that process deliver us a more qualified candidate. And finally, we've had the luxury of trying her out. For how many years has she been working here, Mike?
Jenny, you've been here since 2002, I think, right? She's still on it? Jenny?
Sorry, I was trying to mute button. I got 2005.
2005, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So she's been here since 2005. And so we, we've, we, we, we know what she's capable of. We see her qualifications. We're, we're, we're kind of getting bogged down into elementary logistics here. And I don't know who everybody is talking to when you say public, but I haven't heard any public comment about Acting Chief Pagan cough. So, and if I did, I'm sure they would be very positive comments. So I'd like to get going and move this first motion forward. I, again, this isn't our role. We're just being asked to give an opinion on this. So I'd like to start that process and give an opinion. And I'm, I, I'd like to make that first motion. And you all have it in front of you, but I'll read it if you'd like. And y'all have it in front of you, but I'll read it if you'd like. Uh, or did you already read it, Jeanie?
Um, I, I think I read it. So if, yeah, if you wanna go ahead and make that motion.
No, I make that motion. I'm, quite simply, I'm making that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Jerry, um, that recommends to the police commission, the acting chief. Uh, Pagan cough be appointed as Oregon's next police chief. And that village board appreciates the commission considering our recommendation. So is there, is there a second for that, for that to continue? I don't think there's a second. I, I would make the second, Jerry, but I don't think it's pointless. I think it's pointless at this point. You know what? Screw it. I'm making this. I'm seconding the motion. Let's, let's see where this goes. Oh, Jenna, were you seconding the motion? Do you have a question?
I, I just, I wanted to point of clarification. Or I wanted to clarify something. So not, not a second, but.
Okay, I'll second it so we can keep going.
Okay. Thank you. So I, I feel like we're, um. We have a couple different things going on and they're getting intermixed. Um. My particular comments were not based around doing, you know, the ten thousand dollar nationwide search. I was basically just asking for a little bit more time before we did our recommendation so that we could. Um, do some of these activities like reach out to the community potentially and have a listening session or something like that before we did our recommendation. That was essentially my ask, um, not to do a full nationwide search or. Even just an ad in the paper. I just wanted to take a little bit more time. I think. Those were things that would have happened in the past few weeks had, um, we've been, we had, um, the opportunity. Outset COVID nineteen. So I just wanted that clarification. That's what I was asking for.
Okay, thanks, Jenna. Any other, any other comments on this motion? Second, others will go ahead and vote on this. So, uh, we have a motion to recommend to the police commission, uh. Acting Chief Pinkoff. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
We, we better do a voice vote here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. So let's do a roll call. Thank you, Jerry. This is hard on Zoom. Peggy, do you mind doing a, a roll call? Okay, Peggy, I think we can hear you now, maybe.
Trying to unmute her.
There, sorry. Forgetting that I was not. Um, Peterson.
Nay.
Donovan.
Nay.
Nay. Thank you, sorry. Jacobson.
Nay.
Glish.
No.
Bollig.
Yes.
Carpenter.
Yes.
Horton.
No.
Okay. Okay, so that motion fails. Is, does someone have an alternative motion they would like to make? Yes, Amanda.
I'm trying to figure out how to word it here, but I, I like Jenna's idea. Um, I just think allowing more time, uh, would be good. That, I don't. See a reason, uh, Acting Chief Pagan cough can just continue being act chief for the next two weeks, right? Till we meet again, and then maybe at that point we'd be, be able to make a formal recommendation.
Do you, or do you, do you want to, do you want to make a motion that we? Uh, that we, that we, we, we could do this. We could say, in light of the public health crisis, we would like to. Put this, uh, process on hold for, um, a few weeks. Uh, Mike, is that a thing? I don't know how people think about that.
That's the board's decision if you wanted to do that, yeah.
Or, I mean, I don't mean to speak for you, or if you wanna make a motion that we do, do a search, um. I don't, I don't think there's a, uh, I can't remember who said an inexpensive way to do a search. If, if you do a search. Um, I think you got, you gotta do it the right way. You gotta hire the consultant. Um, you don't just put an ad in Oregon Observer.
Um, I, I'm not advocating for, for a search. That's not something that, that I would wanna make a motion on. My, uh, emotion would just be to, uh. Delay our recommendation for at least a couple weeks or a few weeks. Uh, uh, until the public can. Have an adequate opportunity to ask questions of Chief Pagan cough and get to know her a little better. And then provide feedback to the commission as they see fit.
Um, do you want to, so you're making that motion? Yes, okay. Um, so, so I wrote a few weeks. Is that okay?
Uh, yeah, well, I, I'm open to suggestion. If, if someone has a better wording.
Jenna, would you like to comment on that motion or second it?
Um, well, I was gonna comment on the motion, uh, I think, I think we have a meeting on the eighteenth of May. Is that correct, Mike?
Mm-hmm, uh, May fourth and May eighteenth, yep.
Yeah. So what I'm thinking, if we extend her term of internship till the eighteenth, um, so we can. Revote on the recommendation on the eighteenth and in the interim that'll give us approximately two weeks to figure out how we're gonna do some sort of. Public comment session, which I'm willing to help spearhead. And then, um, then we can do the session and have the information. To go forward. So that's kind of what I'm thinking for a potential timeline cadence.
Okay, so, um, so I'll tweak, uh, the motion and just tell me if this is wrong. So perhaps delay our recommendation. Um, I could say until at least May eighteenth. Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so to delay a recom, to delay any recommendation to the police commission until at least May eighteenth in light of the public health crisis. Um, to potentially arrange opportunities for the public to provide feedback to the commission. Does that sound okay? So is that a first and a second?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that, all right. Any discussion on that motion? Yes, Jerry?
Yes, what, what, uh, opportunities to get, I mean, what are we gonna, how are we gonna, uh. Solicit public input, I guess is my question.
Yeah, Jenna.
Well, Emily is on the Zoom call, not to call you out, Oregon Observer, but, um, that's. I mean, just having this conversation here, I think, is a way to notify the public of that. And, um, potentially we could use the U-Verify and set up something, uh, like a, like a Zoom call. Or just maybe potentially even use it, um, with like a email address for the commission to say, you know, if you'd like the information. I'm not sure those, just throwing it out there off the top of my head, but.
Yes, Elise.
Uh, I think maybe like Facebook. This could be, or something like that could be a good platform for the public. A lot of people. Are familiar with Facebook, already have access. We can make it, you know, available by the public, but that way. It's a little difficult on Zoom with the comp that we have to, to kind of field questions that people would get. Um, but on Facebook, people could type out questions and she could see those as they come up and maybe answer them as they. Come up and then people will get a chance to, you know, ask their questions that way.
Uh, Corey.
So, you know, to me. We're talking about two things here. We're talking about. You know, the community getting comfortable with Acting Chief Pagan cough. And we're talking about what is the process. And to me, I, I don't know that we need to make a recommendation to wait. I think we just need to make a recommendation that. We think that the police and fire commission should, you know, include a public process to get feedback. Um, probably not only how comfortable they are with acting chief, but what process they wanna see for this. Do they wanna see it advertised? Do they wanna see ten thousand dollars spent on, you know, recruitment? We don't know, you know, what the public would want on, on the process. So I, I think. To me, that's the feedback that the police and fire commission needs to get. As, as far as recruitment, I am totally not in favor of spending a bunch of money to, to do recruitment. You know, that being said. The League of Wisconsin Municipalities has just about every single. You know, director of public works, administrator, police chief position in the entire state. So, you know, as far as, you know, recruitment, I think, uh, you know, that's one easy way that it could be done fairly effectively. Granted, it's not a national search, but it's, it's an easy thing to do. Um, I'm not really in favor of that. I'm completely fine with, with Acting Chief Pagan cough. But I think, you know, the, the public process is what we need to find out, you know, what the public wants, um, us to do or not do.
Uh, Peggy.
I just wanted to get clarification on who seconded the motion. Was it Jenna?
Uh, uh, yes, Amanda made the motion and Jenna seconded the motion.
Thank you.
And again, the current motion is to delay any recommendation to the police commission until May eighteenth.
Thank you.
It'll be interesting if this motion passes. It'd be interesting to see what the police commission does with that. They, if, if you all don't know, members of the police commission, they, they run their own show. So they may be like, hey, thanks for nothing. And they just may do what they want. I, I don't know. I'm just saying. Uh. Okay, so, yes, Jerry.
Yes, I just, uh, just had one final comment and, and again, you bring up a good point, Jeanie. Um, police commission may never ask our opinion on anything again. But how, uh, we're gonna solicit public input. What if we just get ten comments? Are we gonna let ten people? Structure the process in, in a village of ten thousand? I, again, I guess it's obvious that I would like to move forward with this, but. Again, the majority rules in this situation.
Yeah, I, I would also just like to go on record saying that the whole public comment thing. Uh, is, is sort of unprecedented, but again, it's the police commission's. Uh, role. I'm just, I'm just trying to think, like, when we hired Jeff and Elise and the fire chief.
Public comment on that.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm like, wow, you, you, you start, you start and putting public comment into things and that's gonna change. That's gonna change everything that we do, which, I mean, if you all wanna do that. God bless you.
Um, yeah, I mean, we, we borrowed a lot of money tonight. What if we, what if we, uh, slowed that process down, we did for, for public comment? It, it's, uh, you know, we, we just, the three of us, or half the board just got reelected. And we get elected for a reason, to make these decisions. And I don't know why we'd wanna drag our feet on this. I, I'm. I'm, uh, unsure, but, you know, finally. People have a lot more important things on their mind right now. So. That's, I, that's, yeah, all of my comment.
Okay, thanks, Jerry. All right, are we, are we ready to vote? Uh, Jenna, do you have one, one final comment here?
Yeah, just on the borrowing thing, we elicited public comment when we did the budget hearing. So we had two or three budget meetings, so.
I can't hear you, Jenna.
Oh. Um, for, can you, is this better?
Yes.
But what I was saying, Jerry, was that, um, for the comments around the budget, we, we do elicit. Community input. We had the budget hearings in the fall, which inform our borrowing today. So.
Okay.
Get that information.
Thanks for bringing that to my attention.
Uh, Corey.
You're right.
Yep, Corey.
Just one quick question. Do we have any history with the village of making a major, you know, department have level higher? Without having the, the, um, you know, hiring an internal candidate like this? Without advertising.
Sorry. So we haven't had, we have, we have not been in a position where we've had the second in, in command wanting to get, take the job, Corey. So we haven't had this situation happen.
We've had situations where we've wanted the second in command to take a position and they weren't interested.
That's, that's correct. That's correct.
Often, seconds in command are very happy being second in command. That's. That's, that's pretty typical, actually. Okay, so we're, I'm, we're just gonna vote on this. So we have a motion and a second to delay. A recommendation to the police commission until at least May eighteenth. So the public can have an ample opportunity to provide feedback to the commission. Um, should, should we do a roll call on this as well? Peggy, do you mind doing that?
Okay. Uh, Bollig.
No.
Horton.
No.
Peterson.
Yes.
Carpenter.
No.
Glish.
Yes.
Donovan.
No.
Jacobson.
Yes.
All right, so that motion fails four to three, correct, Peggy?
Correct.
Okay, does anyone have a different motion they would like to make? Also, I would just point out that we don't actually have to make a recommendation. Uh, the commission has asked us or invited us. But Mike, right, we don't, we don't have to do one, I guess.
No, we don't. You know.
Unless someone else has a different idea of something that you would like to do. Yes, David?
I, I really appreciate everyone's comments. I pretty much kept my own counsel on this, but. We've, we've established the police commission in this community to do its job. And its job is to do a search for the new police chief. I don't think we need to do a recommendation. In fact. As I listen to everyone's comments, it could be, um, antagonistic to that process. If we made a recommendation, because we could influence members of that board. I don't even know who's on the commission. I don't wanna know who's on the commission. Because I want them to be a stand alone board. And they should make a recommendation on the process and who they recommend to us. Rather than us giving, giving them a recommendation. So from my perspective, I don't think we should act on anything that would provide any influence to the commission.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Yes, Jerry.
Uh, so David, are you saying that we should get back to the police commission and say we are not gonna make a recommendation?
That would be fine. I think that.
Why don't you put that in a motion?
I'll make, and I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by David and a second by Jerry, uh, to provide no official recommendation to the police commission. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? All right, Peggy, one more time.
Carpenter.
Yes, I'm, yes, I'm about yes on that.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Horton.
Yes.
Oleg.
Yes.
Glish.
Yes.
Donovan.
Yes.
Zero.
Okay, so we have, we have a winner. All right. So that was, that was a really good discussion, I think. I thank you, everyone, for, for being honest and, uh. That was, I think that was a good process and obviously all of, all of our comments will be in the minutes. Um, so I guess if the police commission reads the minutes, David, they'll know how certain ones of us think, but. Um, I guess, I guess I'm fine at the end of the day. The, the police commission is gonna do what the police commission wants. That's what they're set up by statute to do. And, uh, we will see what they do. So Mike, you'll, I guess you'll convey this to them?
I'll make sure that, yep, they, they know that, yep.
Okay. All right. So then we are moving on to item ten E, which is the police department's reports. So we have the March twenty twenty monthly report and we also have, uh, Chief Pankoff's update on the sixty day. Goals and tasks. So, uh, Jenny, any, uh, highlights on this or open for questions?
Does have, anybody have any questions?
Any questions for chief on her reports? I would agree with, uh, with Amanda and I think Jenna too, that, um, your, your position's been, uh, a little, not a little, it's been. Uh, fr, probably frustrating for you and tougher because of COVID nineteen, because you're not being able to get out into the community, I'm sure, the way that you want.
Yes, that's, you know, something I enjoy and my staff here talked me into doing some Facebook posts. Uh, videos, where I felt like a young teenager doing a selfie, but, uh. A, a good way to keep it light and positive with the community. We're trying the best we can through. Uh, our social media and things like that. But yeah, I can't wait till this is over so we can get back into the communities.
Excellent. Oh, I'm sorry, Jenna, yes.
Uh, I was gonna mention the, the videos on Facebook. Um, I thought those were great, a great way to reach out. And I, just looking at your report here, you have. Pre-COVID nineteen, done excellent job of getting out to people. Um, so thank you.
All right, well, thank you for those reports, Chief, we appreciate it. Uh, item 10D, we have the COVID-19 information. First, we have the Governor's Safe at Home order update, which has been extended to May 26th, and then I'm sure that you all saw the news today. The Governor issued a, a second or an update, the, the Badger Bounce something, yes. Um, yeah, so that's all happening, and I'm looking forward, that's, that's coming up, to getting updates from all of our department heads. First, though, we have item number two, is the Discussion on Possible Action Regarding Resolution 20-12, which is a resolution ratifying actions taken in response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. We have a recommend motion to adopt that resolution, if someone would like to make that.
Dave will make that.
All right, motion by David and a second by Amanda. Questions on that? Mike, thank you for taking the lead on things that we have not had to meet. We appreciate that.
Thank you. I, I wanted to say that what a wonderful job the Department Heads have done, meeting with me over Zoom, once if not twice a week, as well as our Build Attorney's Office. We got, we got through this by doing this as a group, a group venture, per se, per se.
Oh, Amanda, yes?
Thanks, I just had a question for you, Mike.
Yep.
Someone asked me, "Why are we furloughing some Public Works employees and Library employees?" Because they were under the impression that all of our yearly budgets were already approved last year, so we should have the money to pay them now, and we would be in more in financial straits for next year than this year, so what, what's your thought process? Why, why were those certain furloughs made?
Well, a couple of things. We just learned last week that when somebody is on unemployment related to COVID-19, it would not, it would not be reimbursable back to the village, it would be completely on the stage dying. So I'll send you for a second here. Somebody's texting me, I think it's. And, um, I'll just be very honest with you, you know, we had three weeks of people not be, sitting at home, not being able to tell at work, not being able to work from home, and everybody, a lot of people were getting laid off, and I just felt that at some point we had to do the same thing other people are doing. And we, we, we did it again as a group, we talked about it among the department Heads, and we, you know, now some of those, some of those employees will be called back, or to be for the Library, to start doing the curbside service, and we'll be calling some employees back in Public Works, probably maybe in May, potentially, yeah. But I, I just could not. Yeah, but, yeah, but I, and I really, I just didn't feel we could continue to pay people just to stay at home and not work.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. But, but I should, oh, I'm sorry, can I just?
No, go ahead.
I just saw one thing. But we did offer people to take, and that's one of the things that you're ratifying, to take leave to, to not go on unemployment, including use a sick leave, so, so we became very flexible with the use of sick time to the last couple of weeks, particularly for people doing accrued leave rather than going on unemployment.
This is Matt, can I pipe in?
Sure.
I, I just also, let's see here, there we go. I also wanna mention that there was a lot of time and care given to analyzing the impact on employees, including how the unemployment compensation benefits would, would apply, continuation of health insurance, continuing ability to participate in the Wisconsin retirement system. So there was a lot of care put into designing a system that would, to, we think to the greatest extent possible, really hold employees harmless, even if they are furloughed for some period of time.
Okay, same, well, that's, that's, so, we also determined with, with Laura from Matt's office, that because of the CARES Act, employees would be getting 600 bucks a week, and in some cases, some employees would actually maybe be making more money being unemployed, depending on their circumstance, than actually working, so I'm hoping that's, that's what's turning out. But again, the thing we just learned last week is that this will not be costing the village anything at this point.
Any other questions for, for Mike? All right, then we have a motion and a second to, to approve Resolution 20-12. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item three, we have Discussion on Possible Action Regarding Ordinance 20-06. This is an ordinance authorizing local enforcement of measures taken to protect the public health during the COVID-19 pandemic. Examples of Village's response to creating required social distancing, close the skateboard park, basketball courts, and tennis courts. So we have a copy of this ordinance in our packets. We have a couple of motions to consider. The first would be to suspend the way, the first and second readings, so that we could approve it tonight, and then the second would be to actually approve the ordinance. So perhaps, before we get started on that, does someone want to talk about maybe why we're considering this? I don't know, Chief or Mike?
Uh, maybe Matt.
Or Matt?
Yeah, this is Matt, I'll weigh in. So we've, I certainly have been on the receiving end of a lot of questions from municipalities regarding how they would go about enforcing the Safe at Home orders in the event of non-compliance. And my conclusion was that the best tool would be to adopt an ordinance like this that would give your local law enforcement the ability to issue a citation to someone that could then be prosecuted in municipal court for violating the order. The, I think the law enforcement people I've been speaking to, clearly their first approach has been to just talk to people and seek voluntary compliance. I'm not yet aware of anyone who's actually been referred for prosecution or cited. But we just felt that in the, it would be helpful to have an easily available citation that could be issued in the case of non-compliance. Now, the examples of things that I think you might, that, that we've seen, kind of two different categories. One would be businesses that are out of compliance, someone who is operating a business in violation of the order, or there's people who are out in failing to comply with the order. So for example, we've got a park that's closed, we've asked people to stay off the playground. Someone's not willing to comply with that, you want, do you want the ability to, to be able to cite them? So that was the background, that was the thinking behind this, and again, I would let Chief Paganoff speak to this, but I, I think the intent is to seek voluntary compliance, but have the opportunity to cite if you've got a situation where someone is refusing to comply with those requests.
Anyone have questions? Then I would entertain a motion that by two-thirds vote of the board, we suspend the rules and waive the first and second readings at tonight's meeting.
Dave will make that motion.
Okay, a motion by David, we have a second by.
Amanda, one second.
All right, further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Then we have us, the second motion is that we, we have chosen to suspend the rules, so now we will consider adopting Ordinance 20-06. Would someone like to make that motion? Randy's making that motion. I have a second by anyone? Amanda, sorry. All right, so, motion by Randy, Peggy, second by Amanda. Any discussion on this? Yes, David?
Just one quick question, Amanda. Amanda, in the, a couple of sections here, you referenced the Emergency Order Number 12 and Number 28 by Andrea Palm. Is, are, my concern is we have something in the books that really has no effect after the Safe at Home order is lifted by Governor Eaters. It is, are those two references enough to make sure that we can actually remove this from our books after the fact?
I believe so, because those orders will, will, those will expire, or they'll be, yeah, so once they expire, then, uh, you know, you can't, you can't be in violation of them anymore.
Good enough.
All right. Then, all in favor of the motions, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. Item four, we have Discussion on Possible Action Regarding Resolution 20-13. This is a resolution approving the Village of Oregon Municipal Court Deposit Schedule. The revised schedule now includes a basic deposit amount corresponding to the new ordinance related to COVID-19 enforcement. So I'd entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 20-13.
Dave will make that motion.
So, oh, yes, Peggy?
2016.
Oh. We are changing it to 2016. So David is making a motion to adopt Resolution 2016, and I'm sorry, who's seconding it? Jenna, Jenna is seconding it. Any discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right, so now we're gonna go on to updates regarding COVID-19. Public Works is first. Go, Jeff.
Um, yeah, I just have everything in the memo here. Like you said, we, we've kind of reduced some staff in the water in Sewer Utilities, by just really about one person in each one of those, and I did reduce some Public Works crew staff who are on furlough. But we are still covering, covering everything. We have put the summer LTE program on hold. We, we sure hope that we can get some of those hired as soon as we start to see, kind of things start to return. I don't wanna say to normal, but to a point where we feel comfortable hiring for the summer, and we have full staff back. We, you know, I think my staff is working really hard, the ones that are there are working really hard, and, and, you know, I'm stressing with social distancing, and we're all healthy. I have them checking with me every day, so, that's good.
Questions for Jeff? Yes, Corey?
With the furloughs and withholding off, I'm getting, you know, summer seasonal staff, you know, I'm a little bit concerned that, you know, are we going to be able to find those people? You know, typically, you know, those jobs, you know, people take them and they're gone and not available, and those are hard to fill, even if you're advertising at the best time. So I guess my question is, is, are we, you know, should we be a little bit more cautious in still trying to recruit for those positions? And then secondly, with furloughing staff, you know, if we do have, you know, COVID run through some of our staff, you know, departments, are we gonna have an redundancy where people being furloughed right now, that's we need to?
Well, that's, the redundancy is kind of one of the reasons. I mean, we do have some staff that are staying home, you know, in the event, we do have something run through our, our working staff, our, our non-furloughed staff. The LTEs, I have a very high percentage of those who worked last year who are waiting and ready to come back. They wanna come back. I also have some individuals, I spoke to actually all of the applicants and all of our former LTEs last week to let them know that we were kind of putting things on hold, but they, they're ready to go. I'll be honest with you, I think there are so many people that are going to be out of work and not have things lined up. I'm, I'm feeling, you know, we have all the applications. I think we're gonna be able to find people, whether we'll be at all six, you know, to be determined, but I'm optimistic.
And then, I guess, grass is growing pretty heavy right now. Are we gonna have enough staff to keep up with that?
No.
Can I just say something for a second?
Yeah, that, yeah, there probably needs some sort of follow-up, yes?
Yeah, so, so this is kind of going down to number 10 on this list, about the, the impact on the budget. And, and I think that one of the things that Lisa and I will be proposing is, we're sort of talk, we're sort of talking about, this is like we went through the recession, where we were careful about hiring people. There's, there's many places that have a hiring freeze on now. So I'd be very cautious of us hiring people, and, and there's, just like during a recession, there's just some things that just didn't get done, including some cutting of grass, and so the board, I think we need to be very careful. Let's get through the next couple of months and figure out where we're going before we start hiring people, that's my opinion. And get a hand on the 2020 budget, too.
And, and as far as the mowing, I mean, yes, we'll be getting out and doing as much as we can. Likely won't be as frequent as people would like, but, you know, there's a lot of concessions that people have been having to make through this process. And I'll be honest with you, my concern is much more on the health and safety of our, our systems, and less as much on, you know, some of the grass that, that we have to mow. I mean, I, that's a much more serious situation than, than.
I mean, I mean, the other reason, going back to Amanda Peterson's question about why we furloughed certain employees, I mean, we were trying to do our share of, of flattening the curve out by making sure that people weren't coming to work, even though we, we tried to do the social distancing, it only works to a point. And so we, we tried doing that as well, another reason why we were furloughing some employees.
So Jeff, when, when constituents are complaining to us that parks aren't being mowed, can you give us, can, right now, or can you just give us a couple of talking points? How do we respond?
I think we respond by just saying, you know, we, we're staffing at the level we feel, you know, comfortable in the situation for our, our health and safety of our, of our staff, and, and how we're dealing with this as a village during this safer at home time period. We are ready to staff back up to 100% when, when the Governor lifts those orders, and, and I read through that bounce back this morning, or this afternoon, I guess it was. You know, there's definitely a stepwise process of bringing things back and how comfortable we are to getting back into normal operations. And, you know, we're gonna try to keep popular parks and areas like that mowed as much as possible. But, you know, there's things, and I know this is very unpopular, but there'll be things like drainage ways and ponds and stuff, which we may not get as much mowing done. But, you know, I've been very, like, we were just talking about Thompson Park, we're out there this week, getting it taken care of and seeded, and you know, I, I still have 100% faith in my staff to be able to do what we need to do, but there will prioritize certain things.
Yes, Corey?
Yeah, I just wanted to say kudos to, to you and Mike. I, I think you're handling it the exact correct way, and I think it's just a matter of we're gonna need to communicate to everyone that these are normal times, and we're just gonna have to expect things aren't gonna be done how they have been done in the past.
I agree, correct. Thank you. Thanks, Corey.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Next is update from Senior Center and potential for county required audit for 2020. Hello, Rachel, you've been so patient and quiet. Thank you.
It's easy to be quiet when you're muted. The Senior Center staff, there are only six of us. Two of us are full-time and the other four are part-time, and we have all been working to support the older adults in our service area. We're trying to not all be here at the same time, so that we're not all potentially exposed, but it's, it's difficult to maintain the necessary social distancing in things when you're busily packaging meals. So our focus has been on basically four things. One is nutrition for seniors, one is transportation and grocery delivery, another is support of other sorts, our social workers, working with seniors to make sure they have what they need, and the last thing is to try and make sure they're not really getting very, very socially isolated. It's all outlined in the memo. One of the things that was not in the memo was how our first week with our new program at Ziggy's went, because when I wrote this memo, it hadn't happened yet. So last week, in two days, working with Ziggy's, together, we got 230 more meals out to seniors in the community, so that was a very successful program. Yeah, it is. It's great for the seniors, it's great for Ziggy's, it's definitely a win-win kind of program. However, it contributes to the issue raised in the next memo, which is the memo that talks about the fact that we may be subject to an audit this year. memo that talks about the fact that we may be subject to an audit this year for the first time because everybody who receives a hundred thousand dollars or more in funding from Dane County in a calendar year then has to, um, undergo an audit. And we didn't expect to receive that funding this year based on the numbers they gave us, but now that we're gonna be running more money through the system, um, we may well end up hitting that figure. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. Um, my verbal conversations with the people at the Dane County Area Agency on Aging, um, suggest that the extra funds that they're using now to help cover these extra meals and things should also be available to help cover the fallout. Um, so that we're not left in a worse position because they had more money than we would have been without it. So, the potential exists that we'll be paying for an audit this year. My hope is that the funds from the county will cover that.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Rachel? Yes, Jerry?
Uh, Rachel, you having any luck getting drivers? For delivery of meals?
Um, we have had lots of luck getting delivery of, uh, getting drivers to deliver meals. Um, we had our usual very dedicated volunteer population step back a bit so they could be safer at home because they're of an age where they need to do that. And we opened it up to, um, other people in the community who had the sorts of background checks that were required to have them have. So village employees, school district employees, um, people with, with those kinds of backgrounds and the driver slots filled almost immediately when we posted them. So it's been a, a, an amazing um, demonstration by the people of the community to step up and do this. We've had, we've, we've had nothing but a wonderful outflow of offers and generosity from people in the area. In many regards.
Are those meal delivery numbers, are they up or are they constant or set about what you normally do?
Um, we're serving, we're taking all of our meals out to the community now instead of having people come in here to eat lunch. And so, um, the home delivery numbers are up and the, the numbers in general are somewhat up because there are more seniors who don't want to have to go to the grocery store as often. We also have a touchless grocery delivery system um, where people can put their grocery list outside on their, on their door and a company comes, takes the list off their door, takes it to Bill's, buys the groceries, brings them back. The senior pays them for it, puts the groceries in their garage or wherever they want them and goes on their way. And that's working out very well.
Very good. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Thank you very much Rachel. Appreciate all the work you're doing.
You're welcome. Thank you for your support.
Mm-hmm. All right, moving on to Village Hall and Front Office Update. So, I don't know if Lisa wants to speak to any of this, but, um, as you know, um, we were busy with the election, uh, if you haven't read through everything. Um, so we were working through that process. Um, Board of Review, um, is coming up May eighteenth. Um, it looks like that's gonna be held as a Zoom meeting as well. Um, otherwise, day-to-day items are continuing as normal up here. Everybody's working. Um, but we are taking, uh, appointments from nine to three if people need anything and phones are open from nine to, nine to three. Um. Lisa, do you have anything to add?
Not, not a whole lot. It's just that, um, our staff has been doing a really good job. I mean, we are trying to keep the social distance as much as possible up here and everybody's been doing a really good job with that. So it's work is normal, but we are very cautious and, um, I know that we go through a lot of paper towel because everybody's washing their hands all the time and hand sanitizer and wiping our desks down every day. And so we're trying to do everything right so that nobody does get sick up here, but it's important that we have everybody that we have here because there is just so much to do, especially with the election that just happened and that's getting wrapped up, but we're very busy.
David, did you have a question?
Yeah. I was gonna ask, um, about the collection for the sewer and water payments. I know my previous employer is, uh, public utility. They're concerned with what might happen with regards to uncollectibles going into the future, that people just aren't gonna be able to pay their utility bills. I was wondering if we're seeing any kind of impact already on our water and sewer payments? Are we seeing people? Excuse me, having to defer payments or not even pay at all?
From what I've seen, um, with all the daily stuff that I check, there doesn't seem to be any kind of downturn right now. There could possibly be in the future, depending on how long the safer at home goes for, but right now, I think people are still paying their bills. Um, and even if we have a couple of months where people do get behind because we cannot disconnect because of, um, the order that's in place, there's still enough, um, money there to cash flow for a cou- you know, for a few extra months. So I'm not, I'm not very concerned about it yet, but if it goes on, it could potentially, when we hit fall, when we can put this on people's tax bills, that's maybe where the issue's gonna start. But right now, everybody seems to be paying from what I've seen.
Thank you for the update. All right, uh, Police Department update.
Yeah, so a lot of, um, the internal, I tried to divide it into internal and external operational changes. Uh, internal really have to do with the, uh, safety of the officers, making sure we can keep them as healthy as possible. Examples of that would be making sure that we're not crossing paths with the fire department too often in case one of them contracts COVID. We're not, um, crossing paths there. Um, it's been a fight to get PPE, uh, protective, personal protective equipment at times. Um, actually, a few of our local businesses and community members have stepped up and donated or sold very, uh, affordably, uh, this equipment to us. So very appreciative of that. Um, another thing you'll notice is, uh, I've established some substations. This is to continue to create that social distancing. Uh, so for example, um, we've divided our officers out into groups and one group is assigned to the youth center. Um, one group is assigned to the courtroom. And they're able to work, still work out of there. They have all the capabilities that they would need here within the police department, but it keeps us all separate so that if one or two officers get sick, the rest hopefully remain healthy. Um, as far as externally, um, we're just a lot more cautious when we're going to calls. If it's a call, we don't have to go inside the residence, we'll ask people to step out and talk with them, things like that. Um, as far as externally, our call changes have changed. Um, what used to be our minor calls, even on day shift, we're now dealing with more domestics, uh, more two to three officer type calls. So we are glad, knock on wood, that our staff has remained healthy so that we can respond with at least two to three officers. Uh, just to give you an idea, uh, in two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, we averaged roughly four to five domestics a month. And just last week, we had five domestics in one week. So, if that tells you, you know, kind of the, the volume, that doesn't count the disturbances we're going to with juveniles. So we're really trying to, uh, push for, we have on our website a lot of resources that the community can, um, use. It's a lot of hotlines, um, counseling, things like that. I think because people can't go to these counseling sections and get help in person, they're losing, they're getting that disconnect. So we're trying to bridge that gap for them. We also, uh, have our SROs still working within the school district. And, um, I've also, I've talked to them about making sure we're still working with our counselors at the school district, keeping the kids connected from home to school in case any issues are going on as well. Those are just a few of the highlights. Anybody have any questions?
Yes, Randy.
Chief, has the fire chief been supplying any materials for you? I know he's been getting some things and.
We've, we've kept each other in the loop on what we have and so far, we're both sitting really well. But we're in constant communication that if the fire department or if we need supplies, we can very easily share.
All right, excellent.
Yes, yes. And, um, almost on a daily basis, and I know the fire chief is attending these as well as Dane County Emergency Management is hosting, uh, teleconferencing sessions, we're giving updates. And then also the Dane County Chiefs Association is doing at least one weekly that I attend. And also the Department of Health has been keeping us informed too. So I'm making sure we're getting all of the most updated information. Getting that out on our website if it applies to, you know, it can be released to the public.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much Chief. Next, uh, we have a library update and, uh, ooh, now we get to see Jennifer. That's exciting. We've known you've been here all along.
So, um, just a couple of things I want to highlight are the, the previous order, um, in place, uh, really limited the services that we were able to provide to, um, basic business operations, um, online resources and online programming. Um, so we've unveiled online Storytime, um, and some special presentations for adults like journaling for mental health to try to provide those resources to people. Um, but the new order will allow us to implement curb and pickup. Um, so we did have a call with, um, Dane County Public Health today to discuss best practices for that. Um, the challenge will be in the space that we have, trying to meet the demand for that. Um, we've heard in a lot of communities, the demand for that has just become prohibitive to make it work. Um, so we're trying to figure out how to do that in a way that keeps people safe, but also, um, serves our public. So we're working on that next.
Excellent. Any questions for Jennifer? Jennifer, I have a question for you. Um, can you talk a little bit about how the furloughs have affected your staff and if there's challenges that you're facing? Are you, are you facing some pushback or how, how is morale there?
Um, furloughs were difficult for staff. Um, so I think the curbside pickup will be good to provide some additional opportunity to, to get some staff back to work. So that'll be a good step in the right direction, I think, for us.
Okay.
People to do that.
Yeah, I was afraid of that. So, thank you for handling that with, with the grace and the poise that you'll always carry. So I, I can appreciate the position that you're in.
Thank you.
All right, so then next is, uh, COVID nineteen impact on twenty twenty budget and twenty twenty-one budget preparations.
So, so I, I mentioned this briefly before that, um, you know, we're starting to, Lisa and I are starting to talk about, you know, the impact of some lost revenue potentially. Uh, our billing permit, for examples, are, are down. And so we're just gonna be very careful as we go through the year. We're treating this like we're all, we're already in a recession to make sure that we have a balanced budget in the year. And as we get closer to working on the twenty-one budget, we'll be talking more about, um, we potentially it's gonna be a very lean year to be honest with you, as we're looking at this point next year. So we'll keep the updates as we move along with it.
TV, did you wanna touch on the food pantry item ten D? Uh, you skipped over that.
I didn't, I didn't hear that. Sorry, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I don't know if we skipped over the food pantry item. I don't know if TV wanted to hit on that at all?
Not yet.
Okay, that's, that's covered up.
Okay.
Any, any questions for Mike on the, the budget, budget preparations? Um, Mike, just to, just to make sure, um, I'm sure you're still retiring. Bummer. And also, um, how, how will this, I mean, and, and we could talk about this later, but I just wanna make sure that we're budgeting to do a search to replace you and I just, I worry about how everything we're going through right now will impact that search. And it's so crucial to a community to have a qualified leader. And I guess I'm just worrying out loud, but, um, anyhow, that's my comment on that.
Yeah.
You're not gonna stay or anything, right?
The, the twenty twenty budget actually has money in it to do the search.
Okay.
And, um, I honestly, I haven't even thought about that the last month. I, uh, um, I, I was gonna probably start, uh, approaching the board about, you know, doing an RFP for a consulting firm, but, uh, well, that's, that's down the road. I think we need to get through the next couple of months, to be honest with you.
Okay.
But thank you for asking.
Of course, yeah, Amanda?
I, I was just gonna suggest that, uh, the sooner the better because I think whoever your replacement would be, Mike, they would probably benefit from being able to shadow you for as long a period as possible to get up to speed. Uh,
Yeah.
I, I mean, I know we, money's tight, but, you know, I feel like the, for as long as we can possibly afford it, it would be beneficial for whoever is, uh, coming to take the place.
Yeah. A- actually, my experience has been when some of my other friends have retired, they've thought of that and that, that lasts about two days. And then people go, okay, time to move on. I mean, it just, it, it seems like good in theory, but, but when the new, new person comes in, they wanna maybe know a few things. You get to that for two or three days and then they, they need to sort of take over, to be honest with you. That's been my experience from other friends who retired.
Okay.
Yeah, everybody has their own way that they wanna do things.
Exactly.
Yeah. Okay, so item eleven, we have the thank you letter from the Oregon, uh, area food pantry for the village's donation of twenty-five hundred dollars. Thank you for taking care of that.
Yeah, I, I just felt, and I appreciate the board supporting that. I just felt the need to do something in the community at that point and at the beginning. And food pantries, as you've been seeing on the news, are just under siege. And so I appreciate the board's support in that, allowing me to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, item E, FYI, village's overall twenty twenty assessment change is three point eight zero percent increase.
So, so this is a little bit less than we've been averaging. Um, uh, we, we just, we were averaging about four to six percent. And I think part of it is we just didn't see a lot of commercial building, which we hopefully will see the next couple of years. We'll get back on track with a better percentage. Because as you know, this is what affects our net new construction, which allows us to increase the levy every, the following year or two years out for operations, as we were talking about before with Dave, Dave Ellers.
Right. All right, uh, item F, this is a discussion of possible action regarding the second proposed banking agreement revision. A review of April first twenty twenty email from the state bank across Plains regarding the bank wanting to lower the, the village's interest rate from local government investment pool plus one point four five percent for a total rate of three point one percent to LGIP plus point five percent for a total rate of two point one five percent. This would change the rate that was approved in the banking agreement signed on May thirteenth, twenty nineteen. So, shocking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lisa, do you wanna talk about this? Well, I'll, I'll dive in and then Lisa can help me or save me. Um, I, I think we're gonna ask the board is not to take any action on this tonight, right Lisa?
Correct.
Correct. And Lisa wants to talk to her, Lisa and Peggy want to talk to their staff tomorrow. Uh, and just get some feedback from them on this and then we'll come back to the board, uh, on May fourth. But I, I do think we were, um, asking the board to allow us to reach out to Steve Pieter's bank. That would be the other bank in town that we think maybe wouldn't be interested in doing business with us. And talking to Steve and then coming back with, uh, information from the staff and information from Steve's bank to the May fourth meeting.
Yeah.
Yes, Randy?
Uh, so Mike or Lisa, how, how much money is this interest rate affecting? I mean, what kind of money are we talking about? Millions?
Well, yeah, I mean, like, right now, we have nineteen million dollars sitting in the bank. So one, basically losing one percent on that per month adds up to a lot of money.
Yes, it does. Yeah. So we thought, didn't we think that this was resolved? I, when, when we met, talked about last time, or was it, we just sort of said at that point, we'll leave it? And then I seen this in Sam's email.
Yeah.
We'll readdress it later.
We, we always, we always felt, Randy, they were gonna come back to talk. We, we always, we always felt, Randy, they were going to come back to talk. But not, not this soon. And they're obviously saying the COVID-19 situation has has moved that discussion up. So.
Well, I hope, I hope Steve Piana is favorable. I hope he is.
Well, and I I would recommend approaching a couple of other banks, but since we did this, Union Bank and Trust and State Bank across Plains merged.
Yeah.
And Oregon Community Bank bought McFarland.
You got it. Exactly.
So our, our options are are limited. So I think it's a good idea to go have a talk, a little chat with Oregon Community Bank and see. Hey, can you guys do anything better than this? Because this that a whole, a whole interest point, that's like, that's huge.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's kind, it's very disappointing, but it is what it is.
Yep.
All right. So we will wait to see what happens at the May 4th meeting. Yes, David.
Just one quick question. What's the recourse for the Cross Plains Bank? I'm assuming recourse for us as well is if we don't agree to this or something like this in the near future, do they have the right to get out of the agreement with 90 days notice or 30 days notice?
90 days, David.
90?
Yeah. Either, either party.
Yes, Cory.
Staff wise, if we end up needing to make a change, how much of a workload is that going to be?
That's what we're going to try and find out tomorrow. I mean, yeah, the staffing part is going to be a challenge with all of the elections we still have coming up, but they've said it before, when we've talked about this is that they'll do whatever needs to be done to accomplish what the board directs us to do.
All right. Thank you for that information. We'll stay tuned. Item G, this is a discussion of possible action regarding public works equipment. So DR mower and Bobcat mower. Our first recommended motion is to direct Public Works to procure a DR Pro XL 30 brush mower for Middleton Power, including an additional heavy duty brush blade and maintenance meter for a total cost of approximately $3,450. Someone like to make this motion. Jerry, you making the motion?
I'm making the motion.
All right. Do we have a second by Cory? Yep. Do we have discussion?
Yes. Is there a note, is there a trade in on this, Jeff?
No, this is, this is a new, this is a, you've probably seen them on commercials. This will really help us in areas where we're knocking down willows and other brush, more of a heavy duty brush mower for a single person operation.
Okay. Was this in the budget?
Yes, it's part of our, it's part of our annual allotment. We get $20,000 a year. I have money carryover from 2019. And it was, it was included in the budget to purchase. Both of these, yeah.
Both. So the second, I don't have to ask the question again?
Well, right. I mean, we have, we have ability to be able to purchase equipment on as needed basis.
All right, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The second motion, we have direct Public Works to procure a Bobcat 72 inch brush cat mower attachment from Carter and Grunwald for a total cost of approximately $2,525.
Please make that motion.
Have a motion by David, second by Amanda. Any discussions on this?
Yeah, this one is just a mower. We actually have one, but it's, it's too heavy for the type of Bobcat that we use on an annual basis. It's always been too heavy and and we've had it for quite a while. So we're swapping this out with a smaller model. When it gets too heavy, it starts to pull the Bobcat nose down and it bounces. So Gary was able to work out a great trade in and for a new one that's more appropriately sized for what we have. And we've been using it out on Thompson Park this week. Not the new one, because I wouldn't, I wouldn't buy something before.
We've heard that before. We've heard that.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Jeff looks out again.
Spending, spending money is starting to feel more like normal.
All right, item H, discussion of possible action regarding a proclamation for municipal treasures appreciation week, April 19th through the 25th, 2020. Would someone like to make the motion to approve this proclamation? Amanda's making the motion. We have a second by Jenna. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for your work, Lisa. We appreciate all that you do.
Do we need to read it like we have done in the past? Or are we skipping it?
We can skip it. It's already like 7:30. So it's fine.
Okay, just checking.
I think we all want to get up and have some dinner.
Thank you.
Just know that you are very much appreciated, Lee.
Yeah, well, and just to know, it's not just me either. I mean, I have a great support staff up here too. So I mean, we just really, really have a fantastic staff up here at Billy Tall, and we appreciate them so much and they're just awesome. So.
Thank you. All right, next is FYI, applications continue to be accepted to fill a vacant position on the Oregon Fire EMS District's Joint Board. There's more information on the village's webpage. Item J, review of investments, building permits and impact fees. Any questions on this? All right, item K, this is FYI only for anyone watching to stop sending us hate mail. The reminder that the current Highway 14 project is a DOT project, not a village project. And we're all as annoyed about it as you are.
That's scheduled for, scheduled to be done in June.
Yeah, that's not bad.
Yes. All right, item L, discussion and possible action regarding Lincoln Road Water Tower proposed US Cellular lease agreement. We have a recommended motion to approve the First Amendment to Tower and Groundspace Lease with US Cellular. Someone like to make that motion. Jerry is making that motion. Do we have a second by Jenna? Any questions on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11, report of committees, park board meeting. Cory, take it away.
Sure. So on March 4th, which feels like about six months ago. And we discussed the JC Park West master plan revisions that Rettler had made from February 18th plan. So the park board, I moved to approve and it was seconded by Tim Lebrun to recommend to the village board the approval of the revised concept JC Park West master plan. And that motion carried five to zero. So I'll make the motion at the village board to approve the revised concept master plan.
I'll second.
A second by, we'll give it to Randy. So a motion is second. Is there any discussion or questions? Yes, David.
Randy, do we have or Craig, do we have any idea in terms of potential cost implications of this change?
Mike, maybe that's a Mike answer question.
I, I would say that attached to the plan were the updated costs from, from.
Yeah, I couldn't figure it out though, on, on the incremental difference.
Well, it, it actually, it, the whole project went up, not because of these changes, David, but because of the construction atmosphere at that point. Now, now what's, what's going on, if we went out to bid today, it'd probably be, could be totally different.
Okay.
So, so the costs, the costs are actually updated by Rettler more to do with the environment of of projects they were seeing going out versus this, these, these items being changed on the plan.
Okay.
We're still kind of, you know, we're, we're at a you know, a concept level. I think once we have more detailed plans and and we'll have a lot of detail.
And that was my second question is, when are we going to nail down the final draft plan so that somebody can start actually doing some of the design work?
We we have to raise another, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
We have to raise another $250,000.
Okay.
The community. Right, Lisa, that's for, yeah.
All right. So we have a second or a motion, a second to approve the revised concept JC Park West master plan. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Next one, Cory.
Yeah. So the next one was, we discussed putting together a master plan for future playing fields. So the park board LeBron moved and it was seconded by me to recommend to the village board that the village work with the Oregon School District to complete a current and future joint and funding and planning analysis of playing fields and the use. And that motion carried five to zero. So I will make a motion to approve the developing of a master plan for future playing fields.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Randy. Thank you. Discussion or questions on this? Yes, Amanda.
I like the idea of cooperating with the Oregon School District. I, I just, I'm, I'm not sure exactly what what it would look like. The words joint funding kind of worry me just a little bit because if something is funded by the school district or and funded by the village, then village taxpayers get hit twice from the village and because they're in the school district again. So I don't know what something like that would look like. And I'm wondering if it wouldn't be beneficial to also include other municipalities, all the ones that are in the school district. Of course, that might complicate things. I'm, I'm open to see what you, you might come up with here. I just would caution us to you know, be careful what that looks like.
Yeah. And, and at the park board, we had quite a discussion on that exact item, Amanda. You know, this is kind of the first step of, you know, does everybody think it's a good idea to kind of look at our park system use more holistically, including the school district and the surrounding communities? We talked about including, including, you know, the, the towns and also including Village of Brooklyn and potentially the city of Fitchburg in the discussion as well. So this was kind of the first step, I think. You know, the discussion about how that study gets funded and who is ultimately, you know, participating in that, I think is, is a subject of future park board meetings and then future resolutions for discussion. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Back to you, Jean.
All right, thank you. We have some minutes that requiring action from the Oregon Area Fire EMS District Commission. Jenna or Randy, you are, I, I know that that was a, that was a long meeting, right?
This was.
Yeah. I, I don't know if you just wanted to give any highlights. Lots of, lots of things going on with first responders, fire police. The tough position, it's always a tough position to be in, but right now, it's particularly challenging. So just thank you to both of you for being on that commission. Appreciate your time.
Randy, you, were you going to speak to this or?
You go ahead. You want to say something, Ron?
I didn't, well, I didn't know if there me, I don't know if there needed to be. I just wasn't sure if we were going to or not. I guess high level is we declared our first, our first, first responders, emergency responders based on that, I believe it was with FFCRA, letters out of order. But we also, similar to what we've done with the village employees, are giving the firefighters and paramedics or EMT the sick leave if they are exposed to COVID-19 or come down with COVID-19. So.
All right. Thank you for doing that. Item B, the Oregon Public Library Board minutes from February 12th and March 18th, special meeting. I went, I went to the March 18th meeting and I could tell you that that was just at the beginning of COVID-19 and the board was already making some tough decisions at that point. And I just want you all to know that we are very fortunate to have a good library board. Folks, I, I feel like folks are making some tough decisions based on facts and not feelings, and that's sometimes not popular. But I don't know, I don't know, Mike or Randy, if you want to make any other comments on that.
I'm, I'm just saying, Jean, I mean, the last one was pretty tough because it involved, you know, approving furloughs, which is always unpleasant sort of situation to be, to be in. Not, now we have a meeting on Wednesday. I think we'll talk about how this curbside and all that stuff is going to work out from the library, but I'm glad, I'm glad to see it's going to have some more activity there.
Yeah, I have to agree with Randy. So there was, it was a very thoughtful discussion by the library board before they frilled some employees. They had a good, end up discussion about the process.
Good. Thank you for your service on that, Randy. Appreciate it. We have no unfinished business. We have new business approval, pending new operator licenses recommended by the police department. Quick Trip number 731 Brett P. Ward. Would someone like to make a motion to approve that?
I'm making.
I have a motion by Randy, a second by Amanda to approve Brent P. Ward at Quick Trip 731. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We have no other new business. So then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second by, by Jenna. All those, Jerry's cat also votes yes.
Yes.
How many cats are there, Jerry?
Um, I haven't counted today yet.
He means to say I'll be stopping by tomorrow.
Yeah, well, they're, they just stopped by. They're like, it's like the, the meals from the senior center, they stopped by and just sleeping in the garage.
Oh, all right. So all those in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your dedication and time tonight. This is a long meeting, very productive.
I can't even bring that up.
Thank you, thank you. All right. So Elise, you'll, you'll sign us off, right?
Okay, again, thanks, everybody. Bye. Thank you.